Actually, I prefer that. I have to chair that meeting. I prefer that, actually. I'm going to put you right next to me, Peter.
All right. Okay, we are live.
You're streaming live to Facebook now.
Yay.
Peter, well, we have the dias set up as it used to be. In council chambers.
Still there. Hasn't gone anywhere, so.
But you can, we don't have to do spacing that's further than that.
We are, restrictions are done in terms of requirements of interior capacities and things like that, as of, you know, whether or not we should be keeping spaces, you know, it's kind of a personal value judgment at this point, but we're not required to.
Good.
Where's our crew?
Can't hear you, Peter.
I got one crew. Coming over. The reliable one. Hi, Sharon.
There's Doug. Good. Hey, Doug. Sharon.
Good evening. Seven thirty this morning until what time tonight?
Well, John's in charge, so not midnight.
Hopefully before eleven, but we'll see.
That'd be great.
Well, you had, you had Complete Streets this morning. I was lucky. I didn't have to start until five past eight this morning, so.
Yeah.
A short day for me.
Yeah, good.
All you seven thirty people got the short end of the stick.
Complete Streets is very excited, Tony.
Great.
Very excited and looking at how they can do what is in the plan.
Yeah, I feel like a good, good community magic has come together on that block and really great suggestions. It's just really gonna make things better and their willingness to just kind of jump on and do the work with us too is excellent.
Right. And I found the connection for a, the farmer's market.
Okay, I also talked with Maine Organic Farmers about that and they had some ideas that might be able to help.
Yeah, good, good.
Well, we can't start with only three counselors. There's four, five.
Yeah.
Hi, guys. I should.
I'm gonna leave you for a bit, just so I can go back and check who I spoke with today. But I'll be back before, I'll be back in a minute's time.
Okay. All right, let's get going here. We're just a minute past six thirty. Where, are we up on recording? Okay.
Did everybody else just hear that voice say, "Recording in progress"?
Yeah.
I did.
Zoom gives you a warning now.
And are we on with the broadcast? Okay, great. So we'll call our meeting to order. This is town council meeting for Tuesday, June first, 2021. This is meeting number one four dash two one, being held remotely for maybe the second to last time on the Zoom platform. Thank you for joining us this evening. There will be a number of moments where the public can participate, and I'll give some instructions about how to do that a little bit later on. Essentially, you'll be invited over when we have public comment periods, and we can recognize you by using the raised hand feature. But let's go ahead and start this evening with, to find out who's here, and we'll take roll call as we do with a lot of votes, all of the votes and many of the actions. Call each counselor by name so that we have a visual and audio recording of the votes. Counselor Whitney?
Here.
Counselor Daniele?
Here.
Counselor Lawrence?
Here.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
Counselor Riley?
Present.
And the chair, John Egan, is here. Counselor Bradley is absent. I'm not sure if he's going to be joining us or not. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please note the flag behind Counselor Whitney and her camera screen. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a full agenda this evening. We have two public hearings. We have, finally, the unveiling of our first results from our engagements with principal group and our revisioning process. That is the highlight of tonight's agenda in terms of, certainly in terms of the most time that we're trying to dedicate. And so we'll, we'll move right through the rest of the agenda so that we can have ample time to both take public comment, have a discussion on our budget, and then have a lengthy discussion with principal group after their presentation. Just a few action items this evening, including two public hearings, and we'll get to those in just a minute, but first, I'd like to start with waiving a reading of the minutes of the meeting number one three dash two one, held on May eighteenth.
Move to approve the twenty-nine pages of minutes as written.
Second.
Any reason to take any items out of the minutes for corrections, or are we okay with them as presented?
Yes, correction, thirty pages.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Sharon, could you please note Counselor Bradley has joined us? The motion has been moved and seconded for adopting the minutes. We'll go down the road. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yep.
Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Minutes are adopted. Thank you very much, Sharon. The next item on our agenda is announcements. I have just a couple. And then we'll see if anybody else has any announcements. Just to remind everyone that the RSU five budget validation election is taking place next week, a week from today, Tuesday, June eighth, at twenty, on twenty twenty-one at the Freeport High School Gymnasium. The polls will be open on June eighth from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are also available at the clerk's office. For more information or to request an absentee ballot, you can call the clerk at eight six five four seven four three, extension one two two or one two three. That's the RSU five budget validation election, one week from this evening on, all day, on Tuesday, June eighth. Spring cleanup week also starts next week. This year, there is a different schedule to kind of spread it out and make it a little easier on both the residents going there, as well as the staff who work there. We're going to spread out the visits for the bulky waste cleanup items being taken to the transfer station all week, including Monday and Tuesday, two days that were not normally open at the landfill. So, starting Monday, June seventh, and going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, seven, eight, nine, ten of next week, from nine AM until seven PM. You must bring in the completed coupon that was mailed to every resident in order to get your one pickup truck-sized load of waste free at the recycling center. There are some conditions about hazardous materials and paints and fuels and stuff like that. You also must have a twenty twenty-one transfer station landfill facility sticker, or get one for six dollars on one of those days. So, keep in mind, this is different. We're taking the bulky waste cleanup during the week. These items will not be accepted on Saturday, the twelfth. The bulky waste cleanup only is from Monday through Thursday, June seven, eight, nine, ten. And lastly, please mark your calendar for signing up for Freeport Community Library Summer Reading and Math Program, also beginning next week, Monday, June seventh. Details will be available soon at the Freeport's, Freeport Library's website, freeportlibrary.com, or you can call eight six five three three oh seven for more information. Any other announcements counselors would like to make? Counselor Bradley?
I'd just like to report that I've heard back from Harold Art's attorney and Harold Art, and they're proposing meetings with Earl and Peter sixth, seventh, or tenth of next to go over the cleanup.
That's great. Progress towards cleaning up the Island Rover site. That's great to hear. Any other announcements from other counselors? Okay, we'll move along to the next item on our agenda is information exchange. This is a chance for brief reports on committee, attend committees, meetings that counselors have attended, feedback from the general public and constituents, and just generally other business as the council operates in the community in between meetings. I'm going to just start so I don't forget that I've received a request and a whole bunch of backup information from a relative of Ron Cummings Senior, who was responsible approximately forty-five to fifty years ago with the creation of Florida Lake as a destination spot in downtown, in Freeport. It happens to be just down the street from where I live, and I'm a frequent enjoyer user of Florida Lake today, mostly for bird watching and dog walking. And there's a long history there of installations at Florida Lake and Linda Foster has sent me some information, and I'm planning to work with the Freeport Historical Society to see if we can maybe get some kind of a plaque or a sign installed out at the front of the Florida Lake Trails to commemorate that history. It's such a striking difference between what it is today, which is essentially a a bird sanctuary, and what it was fifty years ago in terms of a summer vacation destination with all kinds of events and activities there. So, we have a great group in our community, the Historical Society, that keeps track of these things so that we don't lose sight of our history. And I think it would make an excellent idea to put that in some kind of visual form at the, at the front entrance to Florida Lake, so I'll plan to take that up with Jim Cram at the, at the Historical Society. Other counselors have committees that they've attended. Counselor Riley?
The Complete Streets Committee met today, and they're very excited about the Freeport vision and excited to work on the components that are there, and then they have also had a chance to, Jake's gonna have to jump in on the part that I missed, but coming back talking about many other projects in town. One of the biggest things, though, is the Complete Streets Committee will no longer meet on the first Tuesday of the month, so that counselors might get a shorter day. But that, that's just in the side. One of the things that they're looking at is simple tasks like we don't have a taxi in town anymore, so removing, requesting the removal of the taxi stand and adding parking spaces in front of Sherman's Bookstore so that Parklet could be maybe installed in an area in that section of Main Street. And then there is the, the constant talk about beautification of the town, and Complete Streets has an impact in that, and the suggestion that we could tie it in to our Sister Cities program so that we could celebrate with the Sister City of Angeles in the north of Russia. That's number one. Number two, had a wonderful telephone conversation with Daniel Walker, who is an attorney and who served on a committee that was involved with the regulation of airboat noise. And he was saying that House Bill number one one four will be coming into play, but not necessarily coming into play for the summer. So he's making a suggestion to us that we restrict boat launches of any vessel to not be launched before seven AM in the morning. And that would help with the reduction of airboat noises going up and down our shoreline at six o'clock in the morning, or five thirty, or five o'clock, whenever it really happens. So, good conversation there. He may be present and be commenting in the public comment period with, along with others. Thank you.
Okay. Any other information exchange? Counselor Whitney?
Yes, I attended the age-friendly Freeport and Powell monthly meeting, and they were very excited to learn that Bartow Library is setting the example and bringing their bathrooms up to ADA compliance. They had actually said, they were making the suggestion, and we're glad to hear that that was already a priority of ours. And then there's going to be a new television series on our local, local cable channel, and it's called Knowledge Age. And it is going to be a program that, that airs conversations with professionals, authors, and speakers. And they'll have four to five new videos each month, and those will air Sundays, seven thirty PM, Monday, ten AM, and Wednesdays at six PM. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other information exchange, Counselor Daniele?
To go off what Counselor Riley was saying about the Complete Streets meeting, the final Bridge Steering Committee meeting will be June eighth, and then I think MDOT is planning on doing a townwide meeting the end of June, beginning of July, for a little bit more of public comment, so look forward to that. And just a shout out to the Sustainability Committee, who did a really nice seminar on composting just a week or so ago. So hats off for them for getting back to it. So, thank them for that.
Great. Lots of good things going on with all of our volunteer groups across the community. Other information items to share? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Town Managers Report. Peter?
Mr. Chair, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, so we've got, I see we've got forty-six audience members, which is fantastic. So, and we're not talking about short-term rentals, so there's a lot going on tonight, I guess. Must have drawn him here for all the right reasons. I've got, I've got several items here, but I'm happy to report as of two weeks ago now, almost two weeks ago now, due to change in our statewide regulations, the town has adjusted, you know, appropriately, based on the changes that the governor put into place, removing a lot of the assembly restrictions, the capacity restrictions, and mask restrictions that were mandated for indoor places. So, just want to kind of fill the public in on that, that our town facilities are open without restriction at this point in time. We are requesting politely that if individuals have not been fully vaccinated for COVID, that they continue to wear masks. However, we're leaving a little bit of personal responsibility to do the right thing up to people here, and people are not, you know, town employees are not checking vaccine cards at the door. So, we respectfully request people comply with that. If you're inside a town facility, I'm also happy to report that the library, the Freeport Community Library, due to a lot of the changes, a lot of those changes that I just mentioned, but also due to demand, is moving back to four days in person and one day of curbside to meet the demand. We still do have some people who are not comfortable going inside yet, who want to continue to use curbside. So, as we have since the start of the pandemic, the curbside day will continue to be on Friday, but Monday through Thursday, starting next week, are going to be fully open days up at the library. So, and I give them applause for adjusting to the demand for what people are looking for at any given time and in adjusting our schedule to meet that. So, we're, we're thinking about continuing curbside for a little while here, at least, until that demand goes away, and then maybe doing curbside upon request after that point in time. But I don't think that the staff has a, a plan on what that date, that change would be. So, a little bit returned to normal, but, you know, we're still encouraging people to, who, who either are vulnerable or not vaccinated, to take the appropriate precautions. Per the CDC guidance, a couple of counselors had mentioned the bridge project and the Complete Streets Committee and some of the meetings coming up. We did have a good conference today with not a ton to report. I think that that'll all be coming out in the, of the committees in the next few weeks, but we had the Active Living Committee, the Complete Streets Committee, myself, our state representative set the meeting up. So, thank you to Melanie Sacks for doing that. And the bridge in the bike pedestrian branch, or multimodal, as they call her, yes, the, the bike pedestrian facilitator essentially at the state. And to talk about some of the connections at the bridges, I know that there have been concerns about the, specifically about where the pedestrian path connections or the multi-use path connections are going to be made. So, I think we've, we've ironed out a lot of the issues, kind of, that will be presented in the, in the final draft plan as it comes out next week. There is going to be, as people have kind of alluded to in previous discussions, the future connection kind of by the, essentially the Irving Station at exit twenty-two. And we talked about how that would be made when Mallet Drive is redone, and whatever the town is going to be proposing to do on Mallet Drive for bike pedestrian facilities, and how that's going to be interacting. We made some good connections in the the bike pedestrian facilitator essentially for the entire state is going to be doing a sidewalk with some of our committee members, and hopefully our town engineer and maybe some of our other staff on this Thursday to look at how that would factor into both tax funding and state funding programs. So, a lot of progress made this morning, so thanks to everyone who was in on that on that meeting. I want to report briefly. I know I've gotten several questions, a lot of questions today on Memorial Day, and I guess there had been a lot of questions and some controversy about Memorial Day flags, and specifically those of you that know, that have been around for many years, know that there is a series of flags that are placed at the kind of the intersection of Main and West Street there, done by the police station, working, police department, I should say, working with the community groups. I know the scouts are often involved in that, that project as well. And you may have noticed that yesterday that there were flags that were not, that were not, there were no flags, there were flagpoles that were not flags, and a couple of people called asking if that was a mistake or something was wrong. And I do want to kind of explain to everybody what's going on there and why that is. Those flags, those flagpoles under there, each one represents, each individual flagpole represents a family member, a request that's been requested by the community to have a flag displayed. It's a deceased military member, a service member. And each one of those flagpoles flies an individual flag that's donated, in most cases, by the family member. And most of those flags are actually, I should say, some of those flags are ceremonial flags, and, and a lot of them are actually antique. We've got World War II and newer flags. And in some cases, these are memorial flags, like we're, we're talking like casket flags from the person's funeral, or the memorial flag that's handed to the family when they have a full military burial. So, a lot of these items have been donated by these family members and asked to be flown specifically on Memorial Day for their family members, so. And coupled with the fact that some of these are antique flags, we've got wool flags, we've got cotton flags from pretty much every conflict back to World War II that were in the possession of the police department. So, it's not a mistake when those don't go up in the rainy weather. Those are, those are, those are very special items to the people who have donated them, and out of respect for that, those aren't flown in inclement weather, specifically because they're, most of those are memorial flags for each individual deceased service member. So, I do want to assure everybody that the police department regularly monitors the weather throughout Memorial Day, not just yesterday, but on any day. And if there's a situation where rain is coming, those flags are usually hauled down and stored securely indoors so that they don't get wet and they don't get damaged. And yesterday, they were watching the weather all day, and as you know, there was probably about a two-hour break where it drizzled a little bit, and it wasn't appropriate to put the flags up at any point in time. So, yes, that was intentional. For those that were concerned, yes, there is absolutely a good reason for it, and we don't, and we just want the public to know that it wasn't a case of somebody deciding not to go out because it was rainy, and they didn't want to get rained on. It's done out of respect for those flags, so. And last but not least, I wanted to update the council. We've been having some good, we're probably, we've got a chunk of, of this done. We've had good negotiations with the Maine Organic Farmers and Gardeners Association, MOFC, for the fifty-five Main Street Bartow Library space. We've got a draft set of terms. As recently as this afternoon, we've been continuing to edit them. I did send them out to the council. So, you've got a copy of what that is. We do not have a draft lease. However, I will be working hopefully with our attorney starting tomorrow. I just talked with them this afternoon and starting tomorrow to finalize what a draft lease for consideration between the two parties would look like. I did talk with John and Tony about this, however, in that there is a little bit of urgency there from the group that they're hoping to move in. They had originally wanted to open for retail sales July one. So, obviously, our next meeting's not until June fifteenth. And that was a little bit of a, a little bit of a length for them. They've got to hire staff, which is understandable, and get in onboard them and get their merchandise in by whenever they open for retail, so that, you know, if we push that out two weeks or even longer, that could, you know, push their potential start date out two weeks, four weeks, something like that. So, with the intention of having them open by hopefully July first, they had a request of us if we would consider moving forward with that sooner than that. So, that could be a couple of different things, but we talked with John and Tony, and John, do you want to, do you want to explain what you were comfortable with of the several kind of options that I presented?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, I guess one of the baseline elements here is that we empower the manager to execute documents and contracts all the time. Generally with guidance from the council, if it's a substantive issue. We have been working on trying to get a tenant in, in the Bartow Library for quite some time, and and the agreement that's in front of us, which you have a summary of is, is a solid agreement that gets a lease-paying tenant into that building nearly immediately after execution. So, we're excited to finally have some occupancy going on in there, and to try and respect the late hour here, which we're finally making a decision to go forward on something, which we have not necessarily been the, the most efficient decision-makers. I'd like to just get a concurrence that we can go ahead and empower Peter to make those final negotiations on that lease using the terms in the document that's been shared with you, so that we can get that done prior to our next meeting, which isn't until June fifteenth.
You need a motion?
Well, we don't, we don't really have an action item for vote. We're really just empowering the manager to, to go ahead and do that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with that, with that process, so that Peter can get to it and, and carry out his duties as the manager.
I think we, I think we'd want to do, to have, I would want to have the council chair and vice chair see, you know, whatever final version it is, and I'm fine forwarding out the lease to the council, understanding we can't make a council decision on that before it's done, but sharing that document before. But sharing that document before it's signed, if anybody has any concerns, they can speak directly to John.
Counsel Bradley?
I don't have that document. When did it go out?
Sure, like an hour ago. I'll put it up on the screen for you and we've been negotiating up until about an hour ago.
I just haven't seen it.
Here I can, John, if you, I don't want to take a lot of time, but you want me to splash it up so people can see what we're talking about?
Uh, I, I think I'd rather not, Peter, because we got a lot to get to and I want to move along, but it's available in your email. We're not signing anything this evening. We're just looking to get concurrence to move forward. Counsel Lawrence?
Didn't we do that last time when we voted on this? I thought that's what we were giving them the power to do.
Pretty much we did, but we didn't have any terms in front of us of what the the actual agreement was going to be ironed out on. We just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that. Counsel Riley?
I'm very comfortable with it and I recommend go forward with it.
I can, I can add, you and I had talked about some provisions about financial, financial statements and all that. We have talked about that and that will be included in any lease about receiving financial statements at year one and year two of the lease.
Could you, could you just tell us what the lease term is, the, the financial term?
Yep, sure. So, so nineteen, nineteen months, essentially eighteen months, you know, plus June, part of June. It's about fifty-two thousand dollars a year. It works out to, so I think it's forty-five, forty-four, forty-five thousand a month, forty-five hundred a month, sorry. Whatever fifty-two thousand divided by twelve is, it'll be a six month term. There is a opt-out clause if they do not make seventy percent of their forecasted net income on the property. Otherwise they are staying in the property for eighteen months. And as a result of that, we're going to get their financials at twelve, at six months. So in December and then at eighteen months at the end. So we've got that to see the performance of the space, what their costs are. And if they want, there may be interest for them to stay later, but we renegotiate in, you know, sixteen months for an eighteen month negotiation. And they compete with whatever the market is at that time.
Is there a town opt-out?
There is not.
And what are you doing to verify the financials that they're giving you that they have to meet? How, how do you know that isn't whatever, how do you know it's not real?
Yep. Well, we're going to talk with our attorney about what exactly we need to see. I haven't had the, you know, I haven't sat down with him on this yet. So I'm thinking we're going to ask for their, either their accountant statement or certified, you know, financials from their audit or whatever, however that works, whatever they've got. So.
Well, my, my suggestion is that they, I, I'm for this, so I'm not holding this up just for the sake of it. But my suggestion would be they must have done a pro forma on this building that they're relying on. We ought to see that.
They're, they're willing to share anything. So at this point, I think they're fine.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's a good idea. And I think we, it should not be any trouble for us to get a, an endorsed copy of their financial information from their, from their accounting firm.
Thank you.
So that's not just printed out of somebody's QuickBooks. Otherwise, everybody all right with going ahead with the terms and letting the manager finalize that negotiation and Tony and I will see the the, the final lease before it's signed, but rather than holding that up for another two weeks and then having another week after that to to get it executed. I thought we could move a little bit faster on this one.
So you're gonna, you're gonna sign the lease before the council sees it?
I'll send it out for everyone to see, but I, yes, the intent is to sign it before you would have a chance to vote on it at the next meeting.
And if any counselor had a concern, they could voice it to either the mayor or to the town manager before signing.
You can, yeah, voice it to me directly. Do not talk amongst yourselves about it though, because that would not be, that would be an inappropriate meeting. So, so contact me directly. That is, there's nothing wrong with that. And I would have to decide whether or not and I'll decide whether or not to take and, you know, to amend whatever we're talking about with them to include that. So that's what you're giving the authority to do.
Okay. Peter, anything else in the town manager's report?
Get a lot, but I'm not making fifty-one now. Audience members sit through all the important things that I have to say. So I think we've got a lot to do tonight. I'll, I'll let you move on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Our next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a chance for the general public to address the council, bring up concerns you may have, criticisms, occasionally accolades and praise. And let us know what's on your mind. This is a chance for the public to participate in our public meeting this evening on Zoom on items that are not on our agenda. Of the huge throngs of people attending tonight's Zoom meeting. If you are here for the creation of the Police Advisory Committee, or if you are here for the operating capital and TIF budgets, both of which have public hearings coming up in just a few moments. This is not the time for public comment on those items. Nor on the proposed announcement of the principal group initial report, which is also coming up later on this evening. So those are agenda items and we will be taking public comment, obviously during the public hearings for the two action items as well as after the presentation from the principal group. This segment for public participation is for items that are not on our agenda. So if we left something out or if you would like to address and bring something to our attention, this is the time to do so. Way to do that is to use the raise hand feature. And I see at least one hand up and it should be at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Should be a little icon for raise hand and that will put a, a little hand icon next to your name. And then we can move you over to the panelist's side of the Zoom platform and you'll be able to address the council in live time. Peter is going to read some names of people so that we can have a queue and get people ready to to, to join the meeting in an orderly manner. So far we just have one on the non-agenda items. And there's a couple. So Peter, let's recognize the first few members here.
Counsel Bradley, were you going to make a motion?
No, all I was going to ask would be as you identify people in the queue, ask them to give us their last names as well as their first name.
Sure, sure. I'll read if we've, if we're missing a last name, I'll ask them to fill that in. So.
Yeah. That's typically a, a component of our public participation is that you introduce yourself when you join the public comment. Counsel Piltch?
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, we'll take the vote to open the public comment period. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Piltch?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Yes, alright.
In, in queue, we have Joyce Vayou first, Dan Walker second. Anybody else that would like to speak, be like Joyce and Dan and raise your hand and I'll get to you. Hi Joyce, you're live.
Joyce Vayou, and as a veteran, I just wanted to thank the town for the care that they took with the flags on Memorial Day. And Joyce Vayou as a resident, has anyone thought about talking to the bus service, The Breeze, about adding a stop at the new complex that's going in there on the other side on the desert road with a hundred and forty-four apartments? And working with the contractors so that they can actually make a bus stop and maybe even make it covered and nice for, you know, people in our main winters, et cetera. But this would be the time to do that instead of waiting until after the place is full. Thank you.
Thanks Joyce. Good idea. We've had good communications with the developer of that project. So we'll bring that up. We are now a fully vested member of Portland Metro. And so we have a little bit of weight to throw around to get discussions about the Breeze service.
Yep. And I would add that they usually, probably what they'll do is Metro will talk with them once they've got people signed up to see what the demand would be before they add a stop. But they could, it's a good point to identify where a stop would be. They would definitely swing over there Joyce. They have already talked with like LL Bean about swinging over if needed to the the shipping facility, the fulfillment center there if that would do anything. So we'll, we'll make sure they're put in touch. Thank you. Dan Walker, you're up.
Can you hear me?
We can. Hi, Dan.
Hi, hi Peter. Hello counselors. My name is Dan Walker. And I live on thirty-seven Hidden Oaks Drive in Freeport. I participated in the inland fisheries and wildlife consensus based rulemaking committee on behalf of Freeport and I'm continuing to work with, with some coastal property owners in Freeport around this airboat issue. And I wanted to just you know, I guess talk a little bit. It sounds like it was raised earlier in the meeting. I didn't hear it. I was not on yet. I was driving home. So sorry I missed that. But I think that the idea is that we are pursuing various ideas about what we can do to, to give folk, to give coastal property owners some relief here and to work together with, with, with folks. As you've probably heard, there is going to be, I guess the, the bill that went through, I think, is getting its first reading tomorrow. And that will create a study group over the summer, but there will be no decibel limits for the summer for the airboats. So I think we are looking at pursuing some municipal options. I think one of the things that, that we had talked about, we've been talking about a number of things and trying to really kind of talk with various counselors and to, to come up with different ideas about what could work. One of the things I think you heard talking that we had raised earlier was, would be around the various launches and whether or not we could limit the time of day of the use of those launches for the airboats. We've also talked with one of the, one of the counselors about a potential option around, you know, potentially raising a fund to help with technical modifications on these airboats. We want to work together. And we want to, we want this to be collaborative, but we also don't, we want the, the council to be prepared to for a potential ordinance proposal that could come from us. And so I think you heard from one of the options that could come forward, but you know, we're looking at everything. And we hope that folks kind of think about this. I think there's also been some, some various changes that are going to be in the legislation around that in our, in our mind could potentially allow for municipalities to regulate better these in, to regulate decibels where as before you couldn't. And the, the idea now is that because there's going to be a shoreline reading, then now the noise is going to be measured on the shore. And I think that could potentially bring it into your purview and into your jurisdiction. So there's a lot of things to continue to think about, but I just wanted to, I appreciate the opportunity to, to kind of contextualize what was talked about earlier. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Peter, I don't see any other hands up. If anybody among the attendees list is interested in presenting to the council during the public comment period on non-agenda items, this is your time to raise your hand. And I know we have a couple of public hearings, which would probably explain the large crowd this evening, which is great to see. But I just want to make sure I'm not cutting this off before someone lifts their hand up electronically here to address the council. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands up. I think we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
To close the public comment period.
All right, we'll take a vote on that to close it. Counsel Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence? Counsel Piltch?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you for those comments. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda. It is our seventh order of business. Item number nine, seven dash two, one. To consider action relative to adopting the June one twenty twenty-one consent agenda, be it ordered that the June one twenty twenty-one consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
And before we take that vote, I just want to highlight there's a couple of really heartwarming things to read about in the consent agenda. Some donations and a continuing of effort from Ken Tonner, a local resident by his spouse to present some improvements at the Hedgehog Mountain Trail system, including a bench and a better sign, which were things that were identified by Mr. Tonner and also a Victoriler's license. Listed there in the consent agenda. Any reason to take any item from the consent agenda off and present it to the full council? Peter?
Just want to point out that donation you just mentioned, I hate it being on the consent agenda, but um, I, I just want to point out that the Ken's, Ken's will and, and his wife are one of the things that he wanted to do when he found out that he wasn't going to be with us much longer. The first thing that he wanted to talk about and what he wanted to talk about me over and with me over and over again was making improvements to Hedgehog Mountain and some of the property stuff there. He was really determined to get that done. And I'm just thrilled that, that this is coming through with some, some donations as a result of that. So thank you to Muriel and into Ken and hopefully this will be for Ken's memory. We can put it in. And I am a little biased. He was my neighbor only for a short period of time.
Indeed. Now he made a lot of improvements out there.
He was a great man, served the town many, many ways over the years. And it would be a fitting tribute to have his desires finalized.
All right. So the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. We'll go ahead and take the vote. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Piltch?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley? And the chair votes yes. June one consent agent, consent agenda is adopted. Okay, coming up, our next two items are, are two action items on tonight's agenda. We have two public hearings. The first one regarding the creation of a police advisory, citizens advisory committee. And the second one is a a public hearing on the town operating capital and TIF fund budgets. So that we can have some public conversation about the budget we're about to pass a little bit later this month. First up is item number ninety-eight dash two, one. Counselor Piltch, could you please read the item and open the public hearing?
Be happy to, to consider action relative to discussing proposed amendments to ordinance chapter two administrative code, adding section six eighteen, police advisory committee, public hearing. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. So before we officially start taking public comment on this, I just want to put a little bit of context that in addition to the actual forming of the committee, one of the reasons why we have to take an action as outlined here is because our charter requires that any permanent committees of the council have to go through this process. And so that's what we're doing this evening to create this committee is amending chapter two of our, of our code. So that we can, so that we can form the committee. Thanks very much for opening that up. So this is a public hearing on the creation of the citizens' police advisory committee. If you are participating as an attendee in the meeting on Zoom tonight, or if you're calling in, it's star six to raise your hand on the telephone. Otherwise use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your Zoom screen. And if you indicate raising your hand, we will see your name and then you'll be brought over to the public participation portion of the platform. Please introduce yourselves and, and make your comments. Feel free to make your comments or ask questions. Do we have any members of the public who wish to participate in the public hearing for the creation of the citizens' police advisory committee?
We have to take a vote on the public hearing first time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what you were raising your hand about Sharon?
That was one of the things. I was going to get some context too.
I'm just trying to move us along. Great. So we'll vote to, we'll vote to open the actual public hearing. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Piltch?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you for that clarification. Getting ahead of myself. All right, we are officially now open. Any members of the public wishing to testify or address the council during this public hearing? Now is the time on the creation of the citizens' police advisory committee. If you are interested in speaking, please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if you're calling in, star six on your telephone dial will get you the raise hand as well. Okay, sometimes it can be a little intimidating to be the first one. So I'll give a couple of more seconds here to make sure we don't have someone who's interested in participating before we go ahead and vote to close. Aha, I knew it. There's always, always a little prompt there to get the first one. Peter, please bring over the first person raising their, their hand. And we've got Jen Gwinett.
Hi, this is actually Sean Jeffrey of the same address. Thanks for the encouragement, John. Yeah, just because if no one's going to talk, I thought I could get the ball rolling for our group. I gave you guys a little bit of background last time we met. But basically, last summer, there was a large. Parade through town, sort of a solemn parade in in honor of George Floyd. Which went down Main Street and came around and it was a lot of people there more than than I expected personally. And Chief Nurse spoke at that and then following that, there was a lot of. Energy from the town to talk more with Chief Nurse, like to get questions answered about what specific policies. And practices are our own town police have. At that time, Chief Nurse reached out and created a public. Hearing, I guess, in a way where her and the entire department was on Zoom and took questions from town residents. The queue was enormous. It maxed out, I think, a hundred people or more. To the point where she realized and and town members realized that there was a lot of energy and questions. That needed to they needed a longer look at. So she asked Lisa and Grayson to lead. Small group of people who are interested in diving into the town policy, the police's policy of our town. And that's what we've been doing. So I guess from maybe June or a little later, we first started up until. Now with the bulk of the work being done by December, we got together and worked with Nate Goodman, who's acting chief now. To look through the policy. And at first, we started the work of trying to. Explain to to understand exactly all the all the practices and and procedures and. We realized that this wasn't going to be something that could be happen in a few months with a handful of interested citizens. It was actually much bigger, deeper work. That warrants the creation of a permanent committee to look at. This committee does not have a particular political agenda. There's nothing. Beyond the creation of itself is trying to accomplish. The idea is really to. Create an advisory group of town citizens so that the sort of. Education of citizens about how the police do things. And vice versa, how citizens can give feedback to our town police. About ideas or critique, positive or negative that they have back towards the police. It's basically a communication line. And and to dive into into looking at our policies and making sure that they're modern and up to the values of today. So yeah, I'm here. I'll be any questions. I know we have other members of our committee. Myself. Joyce, who we spoke to earlier and Ryan, were the primary authors of a of a document where we came up with a few. Action items we're hoping that group to take on, but as. Yeah, we're here to answer any questions. I'm really excited. You guys are are taking this on tonight. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Sean. And we've got Tara Migliaccio and Kate Olson on deck. Hi Tara.
Hi there. My name is Tara Migliaccio and I am a citizen here in Freeport. I just have a few points that I wanted to make. First, I feel that there may be need for a citizen advisory group. To help the police chief in reviewing and modernizing some of the outdated policies and procedures in the department. As well as help with interview candidates and organizing citizen forums. There also may be a need to better system to receive and track complaints against the Freeport PD. Overall, I disagree with the preventing of any citizen from participating in appointed or elected position. In local government because they have previous work experience in the field of law enforcement. Therefore, we didn't all agree with all the parts and purposes, but have provided something. That you can now move to ordinance committee to allow the public process to complete. Thank you.
Thanks Tara. Okay, we've got Kate Olson and Grace Abbott up next. Kate, go ahead.
Hi there. I just wanted, my name is Kate Olson and I just wanted to first say thank you to everyone who's been involved in. Bringing this this issue to this point. I think this is really important and a great example of. Community, our community coming together and working together on an issue of great importance. I would just like to say that I support the establishment of the committee exactly as written. I think it's really important that the committee members are. From the community, but not from the police department. I think it's really important that this committee interface and collaborate very closely. With the police department, but that the police department does not have a voting member on the committee. So I think the committee as proposed. Makes sense and I just want to say I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Hey. Grace and then Gina. Hi Grace, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
I also support the creation of this committee on the same. Guidelines as Kate said and the majority of what Tara said as well. I also agree that. Excluding current or former members from the Freeport Police Department is incredibly vital. To maintaining the unbiased nature of the committee. But at the same time, yeah, there are multiple studies that are site that I can share with you all that we have discussed. In our group, I believe, through. This group called Campaign Zero that we've looked at some of their policies through and they have some studies. That have some details on why it's important to make sure that former police officers from that specific community. Involved in those decisions as well as ensuring that the majority of the people on the council haven't worked in law enforcement. In any department. So I don't know if that would be an additional thing to consider, but making sure that it's just the majority of people. That seems like a key thing that a lot of researchers have brought up in the research I've looked at.
Okay, thank you, Grace. Hey, and we've got Gina. Gina, could you give us your last name? Can you come over, please?
Can you hear me okay?
We can, yeah.
Hi, my name is Gina Ladue Kuntz and I'm resident of Freeport. And I also served on the the committee to the advisory committee to advise on the potential. Permanent committee and I support much of what has been written on one point that I do not support is. Eliminating Freeport residents who do have police background. The list that was. Proposed is quite lengthy. Takes out the the possible pool of candidates. Everyone from a Freeport police officer to a United States FBI agent. And questions about. And I'm not an attorney about the legality of that. I don't know what the implications and discrimination law. Maybe there are none because it's a volunteer position. But I I'm curious and I don't have the answer about the implications of discrimination around. Just knocking an entire pool of people out of the running. And also I do think that that. People with law enforcement backgrounds have insight that we don't necessarily have as a private citizen who have not worked in that field. I agree that maybe saying they're two years out of the of. The police force would be helpful. So there's no sort of interrelationship pull, especially within Freeport. Maybe the Freeport Police Department and the Freeport Shellfish Warden. But in in general, I think. A knowledgeable individual with police history or enforcement history. May have some great insights to contribute to the committee. And that's my testimony.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else from the attendees at tonight's meeting? There we go, a couple more hands. I've got Ryan Anderson, Joyce Bayou, number one and two, in that order.
Good evening, everybody. This is Ryan Anderson. I am one of the authors of the proposal that you see in front of you. And I'm really excited about all of the points in it. It took us a long time to come to. Some agreement around this. Our our committee was made up of folks with lots of different political affiliations. And different ideas about the role of police and community and we had some really rich discussion and. One of the things I'm I'm especially excited about is the collaboration with the police department. This isn't just something that we're. You know, we threw in there to to pay lip service to. This is how our informal committee operated and. Is Chief Goodman, the acting chief stillers, he's real chief. Okay, so. Acting Chief Goodman was at almost every single meeting that we had and has been really supportive along the way and helping us to understand. The implications of each of the policies and he was incredibly generous in the ways that he listened to our input. So it was a very cordial and collaborative relationship, no intent to exclude at all. But the purpose of this committee really is not about. Police and community together on a committee making decisions together about what to put forth as recommendations. For ongoing improvement of the police, the police department in Freeport. The purpose of this committee is very specifically. To engage community members together with each other to learn about policing, to talk about policing with each other. And with the broader community to really more deeply engage the community. In the in the process of public safety here in Freeport. And there's really no reason to have a police as a voting member of this committee because we have such deep collaboration already established. Having a police. A police, current police officer as a member of this committee may create a power imbalance because of the dual roles. And the specific powers that police have that 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 the community members and civilians on this committee. Will are there to sort of counterbalance and bring community input and empowerment to the process of policing. So. You know, when we were collaborating with Chief Norris and and Acting Chief Goodman, we learned that community policing is is really central. To the philosophy of the Freeport Police Department. That's why they were so collaborative with us. And that's why they were so open to our input and supportive of this ordinance as written. And essential to community policing is community accountability and transparency. And this is supportive of the this committee is supportive of the efforts of the Freeport Police Department as they've articulated them. So. Changing that the the line about having a full member. Be a police officer would change the community empowerment, community transparency and community accountability aspects of this significantly. And likely will also change who signs up to be a member of the committee. Folks who are particularly disenfranchised. And and harmed by the broader policing system are not likely to join a committee. That has a voting member that's a police officer. We're talking about folks of color, folks living in poverty. These are the people that this is going to benefit the most and we want to make sure that this is a place that feels safe and open for everybody to participate in. Particularly those folks who are going to benefit most from this. So I really hope that you can forward this as written. And along the way, it's going to evolve and and you know, we have processes for that, but we put a lot of work into this and and as it's written, it's going to serve. A really important purpose here in Freeport. Also really open to answering any questions you may have. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your efforts and your time involved here and it's great as a. A member of your town council to hear. So such a warm description of the collaboration between your group and the police department. So that directly flows back to Acting Chief Goodman. Do we have any other hands up? Peter, I don't see any, but I may not see them all. Just brought Joyce Bayou over to speak and that's the last hand. So anybody else that wants to participate, feel free to put your hand up and I'll get to you as soon as Joyce is done.
I just wanted to, I'm also a member of the group that wrote. The policy and I just want to point out that in the written page in the very first paragraph. It talks about the field of law enforcement. And I don't think a lot of us understood the full meaning of that term when we put it in there. Turns out that law enforcement actually includes over fifty different. Positions more than just Freeport Police or State Police or County Police. So that would. Keep a lot of people out that perhaps would be good on the committee. Most of the people that have talked tonight have used the word police. That is just one of fifty. Within law enforcement. So perhaps just amendment and changing. Of that sentence would be worthwhile to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Thanks for your time putting putting in on put in on this. Language. And we've got Joe Migliaccio coming over. Hey Joe, go ahead.
Hi guys, I I'm just, I was part of this too. I the list that they're talking about on law enforcement, I want to thank Tara for for digging that thing up and. I just say for Grace Abbott and Tara, both. Graduates from Freeport High School last year. They've had a tough time because they've gone to college. They have responsibilities and stuff, but they have been following this. So I do hope. You'll take some of their. Comments into consideration, especially having recently come out of. I think the entirety of the public school system in Freeport. So I'm gonna hold any comments. I think everybody summed some of the stuff up and I'm assuming that. You are going to move this to ordinance committee. With the support of the entire council and any guidance so that public process can begin. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Nice to see you again. I'm just looking at a still picture of you. I didn't. It's nice to hear your voice. Do we have any other members? I don't see any other hands up, Peter. So this is a public hearing on the creation of the citizens police advisory committee. If you'd like to comment, testify, add some. Opinion, add some fact, add some of your contributions. This is the time to raise your hand. If you're calling in, it's a star six on your phone. We'll do the same thing. I believe that's what I've been told. And. Just to take a few more seconds here, I just want to make sure I, one of my biggest fears is cutting off public comment on the Zoom platform. Because you can't see the hands. So I just want to make sure we don't have anybody else that would like to participate in our public hearing. I don't see any other. Oh, there's one. All right, Lisa. Peter's on mute. Lisa, please go ahead. I think we have you on the on the main platform.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Andreas and as was mentioned, I facilitated this volunteer group. And I they did an incredible job. I mean, really did. It was it was a pleasure to work with this group of reporters and. Acting Chief Goodman was just very, very helpful to us and I just am excited at the prospect of this. Moving forward into a permanent ordinance. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, we'll go one final call for any raised hands to participate in the public hearing. On the creation of the citizens police advisory committee. I don't see any more hands up. So Counselor Pilch, could you please make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We'll take a vote on that. Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Council Lawrence.
Yes.
Counselor Pilch.
Yeah.
Counselor Riley.
Yes.
Counselor Whitney.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you all for participating. I appreciate your diligence to join us on the Zoom platform and add your voice to our discussion. So this is an action item to go ahead. Counsel Peltz, can you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the proposed amendments to ordinance, chapter two administrative code, adding section 618, police advisor committee be approved.
Second. So we are in a position to go ahead and form the committee. We've had substantive public comment. It seems to be that the single, which is, I believe, the third bullet item on our material here for member requirements is something that the committee itself was not unanimous on. And we heard some interesting comments and good points from both sides on the membership background of, of committee members. Do we have any further discussion on that at the, at the council? Counsel Riley?
Has this language been reviewed by our town attorney? Does it need to be? It's just forming a committee, the, not to jump the queue here, but I'll point out that the committee doesn't have authority to make changes or set policy. The committee only has the authority to advise and make recommendations.
And, and I would also add to that, Counselor Pilch, there's no regulatory power. Generally, if there's not, you know, you're not creating an ordinance that's giving you the power to, to tax or punish. We usually don't run those by the attorney unless there's some type of a legal concern. I don't see any in this, this draft.
I don't see any reason to move it to the ordinance committee either.
Counsel Bradley.
I'm a little bit confused about process. From some of the comments, I thought it was going from us to the ordinance committee. But this sounds like it's just going to us for final decision. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, then, then I think we need to talk a little bit about some of the, I would like to talk a little bit about some of the points that were raised, I think, by both sides on membership and police involvement in the committee work before we vote on it.
That's why we're having this conversation. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. I am personally feeling that it is in the middle of a tough moment for the country, a great effort that's been undertaken. And the collaboration is exceptional. I don't know from any of the work that's been done that the Freeport Police Department has been identified as having any problems. This is sort of proactive. This is to give citizens a voice in a, in an area in which they haven't had one. But in, in the spirit of collaboration, I've been impressed by the people who ask why we are excluding people who may have substantive information because of their work experience that would inform the committee as it went forward evaluating issues that come before it. I, I can't see why you would do that. I, I under, I heard the argument that that might dissuade people from joining. But in a town like ours where, where we're so close and we all know each other, I, I'm not, that's not how I feel. Then there wasn't there a second thing I, I took from the last meeting and I didn't hear much discussion this time was that police input into these meetings is by invitation only, really. I mean, it's, police department doesn't show up unless somebody asks them to come in. And so even if they thought something was going on in the committee that was ill-informed or, you know, ill-advised, they would have to wait till somebody on this committee asked them to come in to talk about it. And I don't think that's right either in a town like ours. I'll just be quiet and listen to the rest.
Counsel Pilch.
So as you all know, I've been involved with this since, since the beginning. And so I have a bit of a stake in it. I don't have a stake in any particular bullet point or any particular language, but by way of background, we were informed, as I think Ryan pointed out, by a group called Campaign Zero, which was a national effort to do, to consolidate research and policies from many different towns and cities so that every town doesn't have to do all the legwork on their own. So that drove us a lot in terms of putting the document together. And then we looked at towns around us as well and how they were forming their citizens advisory committees or how they had formed them in the past. Many towns have already had these. A lot of towns have created them in the wake of, of last summer. In most cases, they draw a distinction between the residents, the citizens who are on the advisory committee and the law enforcement community. And there's a reason for keeping them separate and distinct. And the, the point of the committee is to provide advice on policing from the outside of the police department, from the outside of the law enforcement community. And I, there are nine total members on the committee. Five of them are voting members. Four of them are non-voting members. The four non-voting members, as you see, there's a town council liaison, two students, and then a Freeport police officer. I believe the intent is to have the Freeport police officer involved in almost every discussion of the committee, save for those that are, I'll call them sensitive in nature. If there's an issue where we're discussing specific things about our police department and we want to not color the discussion by having them in room, it would be wise, I would think, in that meeting to not invite that officer or ask him to leave. So I think it is fine as written. I'm open to discussing it and answering further questions about how we could limit it if we did want to limit it, or rather unlimited a bit and remove some of the restrictions. But yeah, I'll just remind folks that the intent of the committee is to get something moving forward. We had the recommendation in front of us since December and we can change it at any point. So if we find that we tried and we did it wrong, we can always go back and amend it. We, as a council, through our appointments committee, are going to have the power to appoint people to the committee. So we'll have a lot of judgment to exercise in terms of who we, who we appoint and how strictly we interpret the words of the, of the ordinance.
Thank you, Dan. Counselor Lawrence.
Well, I agree with Ed, but everybody's been talking about current police officers on the Freeport Police, on the Freeport Police. I get not having someone that, that, that person on the committee. What I don't get is anyone that's been part of police enforcement or policing or law enforcement. I think that excludes a lot of people from the town simply because they've made a decision to go into law enforcement. So I think you're discriminating against the very people you're trying to help, right? Help them do a better job and not having, and excluding someone that has been on law, in law enforcement. I think is wrong. And so I, we need to do something with that line. Also, I didn't realize this was going to be an ordinance. I thought we were talking about a citizens group and attempt and trying it out and see how it works. And then we were going to formalize it. I don't know when it changed from, hey, we're going to, we're going to put this group together. We're going to say, hey, you guys, we can do all of this without actually having a formal committee. And I'm not opposed to it. I think it's a great idea to have a group that review the policies and help the police do a better job policing us. But I, when did this start going, when did this become an ordinance? Between September and now, because I don't remember.
It's, yeah, it's technically, it's not a, it's not an ordinance. It's a vote to create a permanent committee, Chip. And we, we actually first started talking about moving this from a citizens ad hoc committee that Dan was a liaison to, to, to this stage. We, we started talking about that in April, in terms of what the actual official steps were. So we, we have actually mentioned it at a couple of previous meetings that there was going to come forward, including actually moving it on an agenda item when we were full with budget and some other things. So it, it actually has been sort of popping up on our agenda as aiming for this vote tonight to create the committee for, for some time. We haven't had any public hearings on it until tonight. But, but it, but this has been the trajectory for, for several months, for sure.
I understand that. But it was an ad hoc group that we were putting together saying, hey, yeah, I think this is a good idea. Now we're actually putting it into ordinance. So I guess another thing I would say is if we're going to approve this tonight, I think we've put a sunset on it so another group can keep it going if we need it. I mean, this is, to me, it seems like it's a, an issue or a solution to a problem we don't have. And I get being proactive. I like being proactive, but to make it so formal, all of a sudden, I, I'm not, it seems that this, all of a sudden, me, it's April, right? So now it's two weeks later. I've missed one meeting and I remember talking about this, but I don't remember talking to be a permanent committee. That, that's, so I feel kind of like a bait and switch has happened. I'm not saying that it has, but it feels like that.
Counsel Pilch.
Yeah. And so to, to, just one of your points, Counsel Lawrence, the, it's, it's worth making. And I think Counsel Bradley made it too. We have not identified any issues at all with the Freeport Police Department. We haven't uncovered any wrongdoing, any unresolved complaints, any bad actors. They've been, you know, upstanding for everything we've looked into and, and have been collaborative and supportive of everything we've done with them since last summer. As part of the work that we did over the, mostly over the fall, I guess, the summer and to fall, one of the, the consensus agreements that we reached was that this is not one-time work. It's not work we can do, look at the policies, make some changes and then kind of wash our hands and say, okay, great, we did that. Let's move on. We realized that it's an ongoing duty to provide that ability, that conduit for communication back and forth between the residents and the police department. So when we came up with the recommendations in December, it did say that the recommendation was to create a standing police advisor committee. And it wasn't until April where I think we realized that we can't do that without doing the ordinance. So the ordinance are sort of a byproduct of saying, if we do want a standing committee, well, we have to have an ordinance. Because we're not allowed to create standing committees without, without the ordinance. So that's the history of why it's an ordinance and the history of why we think it needs to be an ongoing standing advisor committee. It can always be disbanded again by vote of a future council. So nothing in here that says that it couldn't be, but I think it's important to establish it with the intention that this committee is always going to be there. And it will be a place where residents can come if they have things they want to discuss about policing, opinions to share, and also a place where the police can come to say, hey, help us work through this particular issue. We don't know how to, how to deal with this or we're looking for more community input. So I think it's important to have it be a permanent committee.
Chip.
So then it should go through the committee process. I mean, I mean, not committee process, the ordinance process. We're making it an ordinance, then it should go through the ordinance process and make sure it's all vetted like we did with short-term rentals, which well, still wasn't right when it finished. But this hasn't been through that process yet, right?
Yeah, Peter, can you clarify for me here? I, I thought the creation of a committee was a, was a vote of the council, not an ordinance generation process.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's in an ordinance. You're amending an ordinance, which is chapter two of the Town Ordinance Code of Ordinances, which is the administrative code. It's not an ordinance per se in the fact that it's something that's enforced that I, I kind of alluded to this before when asked if it's had legal review. It's not a typical ordinance in the fact that it's got penalties and it's a regulation and you're telling people how to, you know, live their life, like, don't speed on Main Street. Don't park here. Don't throw your trash in the woods, things like that, and we're going to find you. However, any, to establish anything that, that deals with the structure of our town, committees, departments, department heads, those are all laid out in this ordinance. So it's, if you've looked at the admin code, it's like, you know, probably 50, 60 pages of like, you know, the, the, the building bones of the town. And when you create, when the town council creates a committee in the admin code in ordinance, that's what we look at as a standing committee that's not going to go away unless you have a public hearing process and that you, you know, you take, you put the public on notice, we're going to eliminate this committee and you let the public comment. It's ultimately always the town council, just a vote of the town council to create or, or remove a committee. But the process is more in-depth. It's kind of like a planning board, you know, or maybe that's not a good example. This is Sustainability Committee, formerly the Recycling Committee. You guys could disband that committee, you know, after a public hearing whenever you want. However, the public's going to be put on notice because you're amending an ordinance. It's kind of like an extra step. You can make, you know, ad hoc committees or things like that by order of the council. But, you know, the, the, you have an election, the body of the council changes over by two people and all of a sudden the committee is gone because it's not popular anymore. The idea of putting it into an ordinance, putting into the administrative code, into the bones of how the town is run, kind of makes it semi-permanent in that you can't remove it without putting the public on notice. That's the reason it's in an ordinance, not that it is something that we would ever plan to enforce, but just it gives it, it gives it more gravitas, more staying power, that it's something that's around to, to stay around if that's what we want to do. If this wasn't a standing committee, I don't think we would have an ordinance amendment in front of you if it was just going to be a one-year committee or, you know, accomplish these tasks and then poof, it goes away. But that's not what the committee proposed. So that's why it's in an, the form of an ordinance.
Right. Counsel Riley.
I believe if this was directed by counsel to go to the ordinance committee, it would turn around and come back immediately. And you would see the same document in front of you as you see right now.
Counsel Bradley.
It's a technical point, I guess, but the sending it to ordinance for Mr. Riley's committee with Dan there and with the opportunity for the people who spoke here to have a, a further conversation about the two or three sticking points isn't, it, it, it isn't evil. It's, it's positive suggestion. It may make it take longer. And I haven't heard any reason to put it into place immediately, other than you worked hard and you'd like to see it done. But it, it does seem to me that because it is permanent and because it is something that's in, as Peter says, in the bones, you want to give it the process that it's due. So that comments like Chip has made or I've made and some of the people in the, and be fleshed out further. We weren't on this committee. We don't know what was going on, but these points that are made are real and they're, and they're made in an effort to preserve the collaboration that's so critical and unique about our town. My guess is that some of the standards that, and I don't know this, so please forgive me if I'm wrong, that some of the standards you picked up on were from communities where the kind of communication and collaboration between the police and the community doesn't exist the way it does in our town. And so I worry that if you create something that excludes one of the collaborators, you're setting yourself up for destroying the collaboration that distinguishes us. Now, that, that may be wrong and I, and I don't pretend to know enough about the committee or these issues to say I'm right. But that's the sort of thing I think, especially in the ordinance committee, could make us feel more comfortable about.
In the membership list, Counsel Bradley, it's, I believe it is the sixth bullet down. An adjunct Freeport police officer appointed to assist when requested as an advisor to the committee. So there, I, I don't believe they are being excluded. I think the idea is for the general public participation or the candidates from the general public to, to, to not have a law enforcement or police department background. I mean, we can get into a little bit of conversation about defining that if people wanted to define that a little bit further, recognizing that law enforcement is a broad term and police officer is a very narrow term. We can talk about those things, but I, I, I actually would like to just clarify that we have been talking about creating this committee for quite some time. And, and I, I really don't, I really don't see what a further dialogue at a committee is going to do to just create the committee. We, we haven't even composed the committee yet.
John, with, with all due respect to, to your point of view and your participation in this, the specifics of this committee came up at the last meeting, unless I'm wrong.
No.
I certainly didn't see them before the last meeting. And I made some of the same comments at the last meeting that have come up in the public hearing and that I am furthering now. And, you know, if you have had a long process and a lot of you have been involved in it, and unfortunately, other people got elected that have a, a point of view that may be a little different. But when you say that there's somebody from the police department that's on that committee and they can participate when invited, that doesn't suggest to me the kind of collaboration that's gone on with Chief Goodman in, in the development of this committee. He didn't have to be invited. He was. He didn't have to be invited. He was there. And, you know, why shouldn't he be there or somebody like him be there for all the discussion? With all due respect to the, the points that were made about intimidation, in our town, it doesn't exist. Now, maybe there are some sensitive people out there and I, I'll, I'll sit back and, and wait for them to come up and explain why they would never join a committee and, and decision about whether they're the kind of people who ought to be on it.
I wouldn't presume Counsel Bradley to know that that kind of intimidation doesn't exist as a single individual resident. I, there'd be no way for me to know that.
Well, ask your committee, John, because that's what they've said. I'm only going on basis of what Dan and everybody was on this committee has said. This is not, this is not correct the problem. This is proactive. Well, if your proactive solution creates a distinction between people who are collaborating, don't you risk the, the ruining the collaboration? I'll shut up. I've talked enough.
Dan.
Couple of points. One is, um, the committee came up with the recommendations in December. This was originally on our agenda in January. I personally sent out the same document that you see in front of you now. I personally sent out to everybody on the council in January for review. I didn't get any feedback from, from any council at the time. It came up again at the last meeting where I opened my comments by saying that I'm reintroducing a topic that, that had been our, on our agenda previously. So this is the third time it's been on, on our agenda. The second point is, I, I never made the claim, and I don't think anybody on our committee would ever make the claim that no single individual has ever felt intimidated in the town of Freeport. It wouldn't surprise me to know that maybe there have been folks who have been intimidated. I don't know that they're having, having. But I, I think it's sort of central to the point of having a group of people that has the freedom to speak in a, and a, um, a neutral environment. Without, I, I don't want to say fear of retribution because that implies something that I don't think our police would ever do. But without that potential for intimidation, there are people who, who would be hesitant to speak out. It's, I think it's pretty clear and I think we have consensus, but somebody speak up if this isn't true. I think it's clear that we wouldn't want to have specifically a Freeport, an active-duty Freeport police officer on the committee, just like we don't have any town staff on any other committees. We wouldn't want to have a, a Freeport police officer as a voting member of the committee. We certainly welcome the participation and we, we wrote in a, a Freeport police officer who shall attend, uh, as, as an advisory, in an advisor role, just like the high school students in the town council. So I, I think that's clear among everybody, but again, speak up if somebody feels differently. The question I, I think that's on the table is, would we allow a Yarmouth police officer, a Portland police officer, an active one, one who was active last year, one who was active ten years ago, an FBI agent, a park ranger, are, are these all people we would want on the committee or not? Would we leave it up to the appointments committee to exercise some judgment about saying, hey, this is a, 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 a good candidate for, for membership here. We've only got five slots available. So I'd love to see a variety of folks represented. And, and I think anybody in the law enforcement community, whether they're a police officer or have some other role, has been empowered to, you know, to take some privileges and rights away from people. Uh, and it's that act that we want to observe and comment on. So even if it's a corrections officer, I would argue that, that still might either be intimidating or be uncomfortable for some people to, to join a committee like that or to speak freely.
Counselor Daniele.
Uh, Counsel Riley's actually had his hand up longer, if you don't mind.
No, I, I yield to you first because I want to make a motion after your finish with your comments.
So just hearing what everybody's saying, I took a stab at writing it out of a way that I think might make people more comfortable. Voting members cannot be a current Freeport police employee and no more than one current or former law enforcement professional can be voting members at one time. Would that alleviate everyone's concerns and be a suitable compromise? That way we're saying we're not totally eliminating all law enforcement professionals, as long as they're not currently working in Freeport, which seemed like a general consensus. And that way it's no more than one. So we're all letting somebody come in if the appointment committee says that they're a great candidate and we want that perspective, but then it also doesn't overpower the committee. Cause I can see the benefit of not having four members who are formal police, you know, members or law enforcement. Thoughts?
Two, two comments. One is the, um, I appreciate you taking the time to do the amendment. It's the, the single-page document that we need to amend. The, the multiple-page document is just essentially, it's, it's the recommendations, which are basically suggestions for the new committee as to what they might do. But the only thing that we're voting on tonight is the single-page document. Uh, and that document is really the second sentence that we're, you know, uh, that we're talking about where it says full members shall be Freeport residents over the age of eighteen without current or previous work experience in the field of law enforcement.
But is the idea okay? Is that what people want? Sorry, I did the wrong one, but I haven't heard anybody say if that's something that they would vote for or not, or would people rather just vote for it the way it is?
I like the amendment. It's not an amendment, right? We're, we're only voting on this page. This is, what is this?
That, that's just advice and suggestions. It was the, the history of why we created the single page to vote on. And it's something we turn over to the new committee if we form it, saying, here's some ideas and what you might do.
Right, so the, the, the action item is, is the establishment of the committee six one eight point one. That's what we're actually amending, the code that we're amending. The, the, and that, and that's my mistake for, for citing the wrong reference. The other, the other document is more of a scoping narrative description of the committee and its process, but the actual amendment that we're voting on is, uh, six one eight point one.
Thanks, Peter. Good and great.
And Dan, do you think that that would satisfy your committee? Cause we haven't been in the trenches with you, although we have the documents in, in front of us.
Yeah, it's a good question and I hesitate to speak on behalf of ten people who have put so much work into this. The, my, my own personal opinion would be that, um, I, I think having an active-duty police officer might be a little too close for comfort. I can see amending things to say it had been someone who maybe had some long ago law enforcement history. Or somebody who's in a, a, you know, a really far removed branch of law enforcement, say a park ranger or something like that. Uh, no disrespect to Neil, who I think is on the call. But, but I think that would give people the freedom and, and, you know, to, to volunteer for the committee and join. But I think having an active-duty police officer from another town or somebody who just retired last year might be getting a little too close to home. So happy to, to propose something that along those lines, if, if, if you want.
Yes, I hope you're good, Dan.
So again, looking at that single-page document, I would suggest something along the lines of full members shall be Freeport residents over the age of eighteen without current or previous work experience in the field of law enforcement in a police sheriff or corrections department within the last five years. So basically adding the restrictions of police sheriff or corrections department and adding a a time restriction of, of five years. So if you served more than five years ago or served in some other branch of law enforcement, then in theory you could join a committee or could volunteer to join a committee.
These are just recommendations to the appointments committee? Cause that's who's, right?
Well, it would be a, it would be an eligibility criteria for the appointments committee to consider.
Right, but it's just, just recommendations.
It would be, it would be challengeable if you, if the, uh, appointments committee decided not to, you know, to appoint somebody that the ordinance says, don't do this. Somebody could in theory challenge it and get it overturned in Superior Court rightfully.
But this isn't in the ordinance. This is.
It's the one-page one that's in the ordinance. Don't go to
But that doesn't say anything about.
That's, that's the one that Dan just changed. It's the first paragraph.
Paragraph.
Under establishment.
Right, right here.
On our screen.
On the screen here. So before where I've got it highlighted where it says of law enforcement and then Dan had some language to come in after that.
Okay. I would be happy with three years. Instead of five.
You have concise language, Dan, for this, so that we can add it in.
I, I, I wrote down what I had just said, so I'm happy to say it again.
Yeah, please say it again, Dan.
Yep. So again, looking at that sentence, uh, the, the second sentence in that first paragraph, so eligibility is, uh, Freeport residents over the age of eighteen without current or previous work experience in the field of law enforcement in a police sheriff or corrections department within the last three or five years.
So moved and seconded.
Well, we had to decide a three or five.
How about instead of taking out field of law enforcement, just saying police corrections or sheriff department?
No, because you can have a, a marine warden.
Okay, put marine warden in.
Well, I, I think the reason I didn't do it that way, Chip, and it's a good question because I thought the same thing was that would, um, prevent a, a secretary from the police department from joining. But if we say, you know, if you, you don't have work, you know, in a field of law enforcement in the police department, as opposed to just being deployed by the police department. It's a pretty minor change, so.
Yeah, but then you just amendment say, take out those last three things and you're back to law enforcement. Instead of
Dan, this is Ed. If we accept your amendment, then anybody in any other field of law enforcement, other than the three you suggested, would be eligible.
That's correct.
I, I'm fine with it as you propose.
I second it.
Well, we need to decide three or five, cause, or just cut it to four and call it a day.
That is not to me.
Right now, there, there is a motion and a second on the floor that reads three or five.
And since for everybody, can we open the, open up the floor and see if there's any other comments out there about this? I don't know if that's something we can do.
Well, technically we already closed the public hearing.
I know, but now we're changing it and we asked Dan to answer a very specific question. I, I'm just asking.
I hate to be such a stickler, Chip, but we have so much on our agenda this evening. I really want to get to either a vote or a tabling on this so that we can move on. We have another public hearing after this and then the presentation from principal, which also has public participation.
Well, then can we send it to ordinance and let it go through the regular process?
I think we're very close, Mr. Chip. If we just change it to four years and then let's take a vote.
Dan, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, can you amend your motion, Dan?
Yes, I will amend the motion. So, uh, so the, the complete amendment would be to adjust the ordinance as proposed to now read, full members shall be Freeport residents over the age of eighteen without current or previous work experience in the field of law enforcement in a police sheriff or corrections department within the last four years.
Since I second the first, then I will amend my second as well.
All right, we're ready to vote on that. It's like, we'll vote on the amendment first and then we'll vote on the item if it passes. So we're just voting on the amended language as presented by Counsel Bill. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Bill?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so the amendment carries. So we now have an amended second sentence in sixty-eight, six one eight point one establishment. The second sentence has the amended language, further clarifying, uh, requirements for the full members. Are we ready to vote on the rest of the creation of this police advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, um, we'll need a motion to, um,
Be it ordered.
To be it ordered with, uh, with the additional amendment. Counsel Bill, could you please reread the be it ordered?
Uh, yes, be it ordered that the proposed amendments to ordinance chapter two administrative code, adding section six eighteen, police advisory committee be approved.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. Okay, Sharon, you got that, that the motion is as amended? So we're voting on the amended language, not the presented language?
I have it.
Got it. Okay, Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
With great reservation, yes.
Thank you, Chip.
Counsel Bill?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
No.
Counsel Riley?
With great enthusiasm, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries six to one. All right, thank you for that substantive discussion. I apologize for being short on the time, but we have a lot to do this evening and, uh, it's very difficult to be making decisions past eleven PM. Uh, which is where our projected schedule might take us. Uh, our next item on the agenda is, uh, number nine nine dash two one. Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the item? And open the, and make a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly. To consider action relative to the operating capital and TIF budgets, public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing for public comment on our operating capital and TIF program budgets. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Bill?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, this is a public hearing on the fine work of our finance director, Jessica Malloy, and many hours of review by your counsel. Do we have members of the public who wish to comment on our uh, operating budget, our capital budget, or the TIF program budget? Uh, if you are interested in participating in the conversation in this public hearing, making comments, disagreeing with something that we have already said, or you wish to clarify or ask a question about our budget, this is the public hearing in which you can do so. Please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your Zoom screen or star six if you're calling in on the telephone in order to indicate your interest in participating and we'll move you over to the live audio portion of the meeting. I don't see any hands up, but often it's a little bit shy for the first person to raise their hand. So we'll go a couple of seconds here to make sure we don't have any members attending tonight's meeting, uh, to participate in this particular public hearing on our budget. So last call for anyone who wishes to participate and raise their hand on our budget process. And there's, uh, we have one hand up. Peter, could you move over Joe, please?
Hi, this is Joe Miliacho, Freeport. And my only comment, looking at this since I was here or the prior issue, is I'm hoping that now or next year, you guys can take a look at the use of the TIF funds, uh, in destination Freeport and the downtown in regard to how they are used for economic development. Currently, uh, we have been, uh, putting about a hundred thousand dollars a year in to, uh, our economic development organization. And, uh, you know, here we are fifteen, uh, twenty years later and we've had to go out and hire, uh, contractors and consultants to help us understand why we've got a problem with, uh, retail as the, the core base of our town. So I think something's fundamentally, uh, wrong there. If we got behind the eight ball, uh, after contributing roughly a hundred thousand dollars from, from that fund each year. So that's it. Thank you. And, uh, look forward to that session later on tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Any other members of the public wish to participate in the public hearing? Add some comments, add your opinion, ask questions. Please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom screen. All right, it's always tricky when I say I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, just to make sure we don't have any more hands popping up. And Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the, uh, I mean, make the motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I make a motion to close the bub, uh, the public hearing.
Then moved and seconded. I still don't see any hands. So here we go. Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley? Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Pilch?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Public hearing is closed. Thank you for your comments during our budget public hearing. We'll now uh, take it back to the staff, Peter and Jessica Malloy, our finance director, to summarize where we are. We're not adopting this budget tonight. We're going to be doing that in two weeks on the fifteenth. But this is pretty much in final form. Uh, unless anybody has any last minute comments, we've been hammering on this for quite a while and had a lot of good inputs. And this is a chance to ask questions of our staff before it goes in front of uh, an action item in two weeks at our next meeting.
So we we do have, yeah, we do have a workshop, a sixty-minute workshop under other business. Um, I'm planning and hopeful that it won't take anywhere near that long, but I do know that we've got a couple of suggestions. I know Jessica and I have some recommendations. I know counselors have individual motions beyond what Jessica and I have suggestions for probably and other counselors may have other motions that I'm not aware of. So um, I don't know. You can do them now, but they're the kind of plan is to do that under the other business budget workshop process. So.
That was going to be a suggestion, but I didn't want to preempt anything that you wanted to present now in light of the fact that we have a considerable amount of public participation here. Counsel Bradley, add your hand up.
Question, Chairman, um, to Peter's point, tonight is not the night. Is tonight the night for counselors who have suggestions about the budget and ideas about the budget to raise them, or is that for the workshop that will come in the next meeting?
Uh, the workshop is scheduled for later this meeting. Um, and I I don't believe we have a workshop scheduled at the next meeting. I think it's the vote at the next meeting. So this tonight would be the evening at for.
You do have the ability to make amendments as of up to the date that you vote yes on the budget two weeks from now. So you can make amendments next next meeting if you'd like. It gets a little more complicated because we've got to go back and, you know, we'll take about five minutes to go back and crunch the numbers to take out any or add in any amendments that you make. But um, so if you know you've got something, please make it tonight, but that doesn't preclude you from making a suggestion. Something may come to somebody Monday before next council meeting and you can make the motion then too if you need to.
So should that be now or should it be at the workshop?
I I think we're hearing from from staff that they don't have anything particular to present here, so we'll reserve that for the workshop, which will be after the principal group presentation, which I believe is next on our agenda. So let's, maybe we'll dispatch this matter. We've opened and closed our public hearing on the budget. And if it's okay, we'll reserve questions and follow-up inquiries for Jessica and Peter to the workshop later on this evening. Anybody have any problems with that?
Did we vote to close the public hearing?
We did.
And that's the only other item that's on the agenda. I know there's a third item that's shown on some versions of the agenda, but that was pulled um by the people who requested it to be on there. So all we have is the principal presentation and then budget workshop. So.
Correct. Okay, so that concludes our action items for tonight's agenda and our next item is a lengthy discussion and 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 a well-anticipated presentation from the principal group regarding our community survey information and revisioning downtown Freeport. Uh, Counsel Whitney, I don't know if you want to introduce certain speakers and then we can kick this off.
Yes, please. And Peter, have you pulled those? Okay, there's my Mary. Russ and Logan are both here present with me? Okay.
At two principal group accounts, I'm not sure who's which, so I hope that they're, that's who they are.
Okay, and will you be able to see them? And I'm, okay, there's Russ. Good, perfect. So guys, although the many groups were interviewed, um, as we searched to find a consulting group to help us revitalize our downtown, it was really the principal group had the reputation of really pulling community together. A lot of different consultants had similar ideas, you know, you need housing downtown, focus on the first twenty vertical feet, but it was really they kept coming back to the fact that the principal group is a group that pulls community ideas together. And the amount of involvement from this community is only growing. There's positive energy coming out of the vision work and we feel that that is just contagious. Residents are continuing to express their ideas and are offering spearheading them to say, I'll make this happen. Businesses are talking with neighboring businesses about their ideas to get support around them of some of the things that they've already seen from the principal group out of the survey work. Landowners that once didn't get along are coming together, knowing that greater good is coming when we all work together. Freeport is an amazing place and thank you to all of you for your time and your input and to the expertise of the principal group that we're going to see a presentation tonight that reflects all of your thoughts. So um, it is a lengthy presentation. I'm just going to prepare you all to sit back, relax and enjoy this trip. You know, at one point they had mentioned that they would, you know, when we first saw the draft, they said, we know, we know it's too long. But we we encourage them to keep it lengthy because it there's a lot, there's so much feedback came in that we want you to see your ideas. We want you to see that whatever idea you have was captured in the data point. So so although it is long, please understand that there was a reason for that. And now I'm going to introduce you as I always do and and our updates to our F U D C president, Mary Davis.
Thank you, Tony. So excited to be with you all tonight. We've been with the town council every couple of weeks for quite a few months and just really excited to be here. You know, as I was thinking about tonight, one of the things that occurred to me is it's been almost a year ago that the street gang, who is this group of volunteers who work on advocacy in Freeport and actions in downtown Freeport. We came together because we were concerned about empty storefronts, the effect of COVID on downtown Freeport, and we were really concerned about the vitality of the downtown area. We knew that we needed to do, make events, find ways to bring visitors in the community into the downtown, which would bring money for the businesses, bring vitality to the downtown and just keep us really going through COVID. So we tried some things. Some worked. Thank you so much, Visit Freeport. The whole Makers on Main has been fabulous. And some didn't work. We closed the Main Street downtown and maybe it was the wrong time, but it didn't bring the visitors that we wanted. But out of it all, what we realized is we had a lot of residents and businesses who wanted to help and wanted to tell us what they wanted. So out of that really came this idea that we needed to better understand what Freeport wanted, what visitors wanted. So there was a clear vision with community involvement. We know that this is economic development, that if the downtown has more people, more vitality, it means good economic development for a long period of time, not just a short period of time. So this amazing group of volunteers, thank you, including counselors Whitney and Pilch, plus Caroline Pelletier, Chip Gray, Keith McBride, spearheaded this idea of let's talk to, as Tony talked about, let's talk to consultants who have unbelievable expertise in rebuilding and vitalizing, keeping downtowns vitalized. And so we brought principal group, Russ Preston and Logan Capone, together to help us take us through that visioning process. Now, we're lucky. We have so many natural assets in Freeport, so many, including a huge amount of volunteers and community involvement involvement. So here we are months later and we are coming to you tonight with what we have heard from you, thinking about the assets that we have to start a longer-term vision. How we can support the many projects that are already going, but bringing to you some new ideas to trial this summer. We think these will gain momentum for us to carry into the wintertime as well. So all of this supports the community wishes. It encourages vitality and economic success. So please, as Tony said, sit back, listen, but we want your feedback, um, both here and at the two feedback sessions that you'll hear are are set up for us. And in addition to that, we're going to want you to help us implement these things. We know that great communities make great downtowns and we want involvement from the community. So I want to introduce Russ Preston, who's going to take us over this from now. Um, and very excited to hear what you all have to say.
Uh, thank you, Mary, and thank you, Counsel Whitney. Uh, Council, it's uh, great to be here with you tonight. I'm going to share my screen here and make sure everyone can see that. Great, it looks like that worked. So um, you know, I first off, I think we're we're at the end of the beginning of the process for for the downtown vision plan and um, you know, it's been amazing the kind of input we've gotten, especially given the constraints uh, and challenge of of COVID. Um, so I think, you know, really commend the community on their on their focus and their their passion for downtown. Uh, it's really reflected in all the experiences we've had to date so far. Uh, so this is an early action plan and it's really about how can you all as a community come together with the opportunity that presents you here this this summer to start to really test some of these ideas we've been talking about and get out there and roll up your sleeves and maybe do some stuff. And and you know, I want to talk a little bit more about that later, but it comes back to this idea that really to create a good downtown, you know, which is a is sort of the heart of your community. It's the neighborhood that everyone sort of uh, belongs to in one way or the other. It really is about how you can help make that downtown better. So I think that's in line with the kind of spirit of this early action plan. And I think it's in line with with the goals that we set out uh, to kind of move forward with when we started this process uh, back last last winter. Um, so as we dive into this, just to remind folks, you know, this process was set up to be very iterative, very interactive with everyone. You know, we're not from Freeport. You know, we want, because of that, we want to really include everyone in the dialogue and include everyone in the in the making of this plan for the future of downtown. And part of that is.
Turn left here, honey?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Start about uh, using using the plan. Mary, maybe turn your microphone on mute. Thank you.
Turn, turn right.
So um, so just to look at the process to date, we really have gone through a series of surveys, a series of workshops and town walks. Uh, and then we've had a lot of interaction over the last several weeks with uh, you know, a handful of of folks on the planning team and and various stakeholders in the process to to really kind of talk through some of these ideas. And this is really an ongoing dialogue that I think will take us through the summer and into fall. And what's really important about this process is this is, like I said, just the beginning, uh, you know, the end of the beginning where we have so much input so far that we haven't really even addressed a lot of that in this early action plan because it requires more dialogue with you all. You know, you you had uh, talked earlier in the introduction about housing. That's a big topic that came up that we'll want to revisit again as we go into phase two. Uh, but there is a lot in here that we think could be focused in and taken advantage of during the summer to really start some of the ideas around uh, some fundamental opportunities with with downtown. So we've kind of defined downtown on this map as what's circled in in red dots. But that that's sort of a blurry line because, you know, folks have told us they really enjoy, you know, heading to Bow Street Market. Folks say they really want to be able to walk better to the library. So I think this boundary stretches a little bit and really is in has been influenced uh, by the thinking and the input that folks have given us over the last several months. Uh, but generally we've kind of sort of said, okay, how can we look at this area and start to build on the energy that might already be occurring or uh, introduce some intervention or some pilot projects, as we call them, to really spur on some some improvements very quickly. So the early action plan, you know, has really been, you know, since January, we've been kind of working on this with you all and it's it's meant to be a short guide. It's meant to be something that really is a resource for you. And we expect that as as the summer starts up here in June and July, that will kind of play an advisory role to those those pilot projects that come out of the early action role uh, plan here. And then this fits into a larger downtown vision plan. And I want to tell you all a short story about how these two are related. And and that vision plan will cover a number of other topics, a number of other efforts. We'll have lots of dialogue later in September when we do a big planning event that we're calling the Downtown Design Week. And then the vision plan will go into into drafting and and be finished uh, towards the end of the year. So this is really meant to be an interactive dialogue and what comes from that is, I think, better plans. Plans that actually get implemented. And this is why we kind of go through this process with communities. And we did this a number of years ago with Newcastle. And you know, during the sort of towards the end of that initial period of of work with them, an idea emerged that they actually wanted to have a Main Street in the town center where they had currently sort of a a highway condition. And they were all very jealous of having to walk across the bridge into Der Masgada to to walk around their Main Street. So, you know, one Saturday, the DPW director, a handful of police and fire folks and and some of our planning team said, let's go out there and actually test some of these ideas. So, you know, that crew got out and got cones, temporary signage, and closed down a very sort of problematic intersection that everyone knew was part of uh, the transition that was going to be needed to make downtown in Newcastle possible. And they did this. They said, wow, that actually we really learned a lot and that was actually much easier to do than we thought it would. So they continued to make changes like that throughout the summer. So here's its first iteration. Here's a second iteration they did later in the summer where they actually opened up one of those turning lanes and made it a little bit smaller. So they iterated on this and actually use real world uh, experiences to inform the planning. You know, so they went out there and they counted the vehicles. They saw how quickly things were moving. They talked to folks who about it. You can see him here on the right-hand side with their, you know, their counting table out. And and what what became a sort of idea and through those iterations of real-world testing but proved to the community that yes, we could actually slow down traffic and make a pleasant downtown in our in in Newcastle possible. And what they also learned is by reclaiming that land from the street uh, that was moving cars too quickly through this area of town, we could create a new park. So this is the cover of their comprehensive plan. And what that experience informed us was that there was really potential here for this to be created into what is now kind of a more auto-oriented area of Newcastle into a Main Street for them. And this went on to uh, to be adopted, the comprehensive plan, and then new zoning adopted. And you can see in the background there, there's that intersection redesigned. And that was working with the with the state DOT and working with the local stakeholders to really prove that was possible and then to iterate and make changes. So it actually got better than the initial idea. And these two, you know, early action projects and long-term planning are connected because you need that long-term vision to start to sort of test things. And then the then what we find is that the conversations around those initial projects make the long-term planning that much more uh, palpable and that much more in uh, real to folks so that plans start to gain momentum. And what we found is you have a lot of people engaged already in downtown Freeport. You can look at the some of the surveys and some of the participation in the workshops. And and we've seen this in other areas of of New England during COVID where I think the opportunity for people to to participate in planning from the comfort of their living room over Zoom, but also to get out and to connect with people and take a walk around town, you know, so I think people have really been genuinely interested in in sharing their thoughts with us. And it's provided a lot of of knowledge. So I really appreciate everyone's efforts there. So one of the first things we do when we look through some of this data, both from the workshops and the survey, is start to understand how people think about Freeport. And and what is really mean that, you know, the local attributes of of Freeport. So we ask them, what are your favorite places? What you see here in these pictures is a variety of town life and and out in the countryside or, you know, enjoying nature. And there's this very symbiotic relationship that your community has with these two types of places. And I think that's represented in a lot of the data points. And you know, when we look at this, you know, there's both the idea of being in nature and the idea of being in community in the downtown. And that's very prevalent. So when we start to look at these photos, we can start to understand some of the qualities that people think are important. And we couple that with the question of, you know, what should remain the same in downtown? And we can start to see what people realize is essential or what's the what makes downtown downtown? And what makes it, you know, sort of feel and be compelling to spend time there? And what you, what I love about these responses is you know, the top two here around maintaining a small-town feel and maintaining traditional architecture and aesthetic of of the town. You know, I've told many folks throughout the country about your McDonald's, you know, your care that you take in the architecture of downtown. And I think that's represented in some of these survey responses, that you see that as an essential quality to downtown. And then I think, you know, if you look at this list, you start to understand that there is a a very clear profile of what downtown should remain and and continue to feel like. And then this also suggests to us when we look at other data points, how can some of these be become better? You know, how can we build on that what what people already feel are successful about downtown? So that gets us to sort of next chunk of questions here, what which you know, just sort of understanding what people think are the challenges and very clearly here you see this, you know, this line, empty storefronts and changing retail trends. And we've come to understand this is not necessarily a challenge, but a symptom of other things that might be going on. And that there are there are places that retail is is vibrant and downtown storefronts are are filled. And I think that is the challenge. And I think that is the challenge is to start to address some of those symptoms that are causing the empty storefronts and 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 not taking advantage of. Uh the opportunities that you have as a community to shape a downtown that attracts people to it regardless of of their online shopping. Uh habits. So we think that, you know, looking at this other list, it's genuine, genuinely lots of downtowns struggle with these things. But I think the lack of housing is clearly on the top of folks' list and food options, which I thought was very interesting because. Some people recognize that there is there is a a level of quality of food in downtown that needs to remain. And then others think we need actually more variety and more options. So as you look at this, you know, these sort of lists, we start to understand. Uh downtown much more from the locals perspective and much more from the sort of perspective of how. Uh people live and breathe it there. So then what should be different? And this is when you start to ask folks, well, what do people understand that it needs to happen? What needs to change? And that, you know, is reflected here on the housing at the top of the list. And then what I thought was also very interesting is that more access to walking and biking and paths in and around downtown. And I think that's reflective of that connection between the outdoors and downtown. And how can that be shaped uh better and made uh more comfortable for people to interact with each other? And to move through downtown as well as to places around downtown. And when we start to look at how people move through Freeport, we realize that you are very much a driving town. But I think when people come to downtown, they're driving there, yes, but then they're becoming pedestrians. And I think that's not necessarily reflected in this in in this feedback. But that, you know, if you're coming to LL Bean or you're coming to uh Town Hall or, you know, going to have food, you're you're driving there and then you're walking. So I think that's something that's essential that we all remember about downtown is that eventually everyone becomes a pedestrian at one shape or another. And when we kind of look at the data across how people interact with walking. We realize that the walking and biking pass is a a pretty large wish for folks. And then that they, you know, they recognize that there are other things about how they get around downtown, even down to meeting more bike racks. Uh that is essential for making downtown to be more comfortable and more friendly. And when we talk about it in that way, it's important, you know, comfortable and friendly, not just, you know, to, you know, to. The sort of average folk, but to the kids and to the older folks. And if your downtown can work for a six, seven, eight, nine year old, and it can work for an eighty, ninety year old. It's going to be comfortable and pleasing for everyone. So when we we have the opportunity to 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 work with some of the students in town. And you know, when we when we gave them a survey, we, you know, their favorite places emerged. Differently than the other uh the other group. But still, it was much more about destinations in downtown. And I thought it was curious, you know. Uh I think these top, you know, four or five are interesting where Discovery Park, you know, that's a memorable place. I think the programming that goes on there was quite memorable for for young folks. Then I think you look at Starbucks and you look at CVS, sort of was wondering, okay, well, you have your third place, your sort of coffee shop. You have your sort of interesting, very pedestrian oriented shopping area. And then you have CVS. And through some discussions with the local team members. You know, CBS is really thought of as the kind of corner store, you know, that's sort of like the place where the kids can go and. And buy a couple of things with a few bucks and hang out. So it was interesting to kind of look at each of these and think about the life of a kid in downtown. And I think that resonates back to some of the earlier survey responses, which is, you know, really remaining, you know, a downtown village, you know, feeling like a New England village. And I think it comes down to the life of the kids. And when we ask, what are the activities you do downtown? You know, no, no surprise, hanging out with friends, you know, folks, you know. The kids are coming down and spending time in downtown, just hanging out. And and I think, you know, looking at all these others, though, it's very interesting to understand that these are really healthy downtowns. You get to do all these things. And I think the kids are recognizing that. And that's why we kind of love interacting with kids when we're planning. Because they don't pull any punches. They say it like it is. And I think that's reflective on a lot of this data we got from them uh when talking about downtown. I think what do they wish for is just more places to sit and hang out, more places to just, you know. Uh be with their friends. And and then I think one that was really interesting is this idea of skateboarding. And I want to come back to that in a minute, but the 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 inner relationship between how the kids. Interact with the culture, with the uh the food and the places to hang out downtown, but then also how they connect that to the outdoors. Is, I think, an essential opportunity uh that you have before you in downtown. And you know, i- i- in my experience, this is, I think, the first time we've had a substantial amount of survey results that involve getting around by skateboard. So I should commend Freeport, and I think that recognizes the sort of opportunity you have. Uh with how your how your young folks get around town and think about travel. And how that actually aligns with your sense of identity around being outdoors and access to the outdoors. So, you know, you are lucky as a smaller town to to have a a great retail destination and the sort of engine that is LL Bean. And I think that relationship is recognized by a lot of folks as being a kind of essential sort of quality to downtown. So when we asked folks, you know, that are largely from away, you know, what brings you to Freeport, you kind of see, you know, the kind of. Uh the typical long weekend trip perhaps, you know, food, dining, go to LL Bean, restaurants, shop downtown. And then I think it's these lower lower ones that I keep thinking, those are the opportunities that you have in downtown. You know, where you could make the, you know, lean into those more, which I think you're already doing. To to further enhance what people already recognize as an important quality and what brings them to Freeport. And then I think, you know, it's always interesting to ask folks, well, what do you think's missing? And you know, this was sort of. Uh a way to us kind of check some of the assumptions that we're starting to make about uh things we were hearing at the workshops. And things that we were hearing from some of the early survey results, but this idea that, you know, the sort of informal shopping and the local shopping. The the idea of markets and the idea of small mom and pop stores. You know, that's something that I think people from away recognize as important and and could could be additive to downtown in general. And then I think, you know, this connection to the the outdoors. Is recognized as something that could 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 be missing. I think that was surprising because folks were coming there. Uh to visit LL Bean or go shopping or to or as a jumping off point to other outdoor activities. So I think there's some opportunities here that that was reinforced from what we'd already heard from from local folks. And then, you know, this is always an interesting activity to do is like, really, what is the sort of profile of a place? You know, what do people think of downtown? You know, if they don't spend a lot of time there. And you look at these, you know, these sort of adjectives or nouns, and you start to associate, well, this this does, is this explaining downtown properly? And I think that was something we wanted to get feedback from going into this next phase of of planning is. What are the things that might still be missing that we want folks to know about and want folks to be proud of uh when they think about Freeport? And this brings us to kind of a kind of key point in our work with you is to start to to pull together. Tools that we can use to help inform your future decisions and inform the way you think about downtown. So a key part of that is to. Establish some values. What do you share as a community? And what do you value for downtown? And this uh this sort of set of values starts to establish a lens that we can look at. Projects, we can look at efforts that might come down the road later on. And and things that we might not think of at this stage of the game, but years from now, people, you know, bring forward for downtown. And you can start to say, is this in line with our values? And and will this, you know, propel downtown forward? So, you know, starting to think through these as we got all this input this last winter. You know, at the top of it is this idea that you're a New England village, you know, that you're a village center. Uh and that you're kind of, you know, the sort of heart of the community. And that you really want to feel like that and have a human scale and 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 a connection to the heritage of 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 Freeport. And then, you know, if you look at how, you know, how a a village center should function, clearly, everyone values that it should be walkable, bikeable, and that. It's accessible to all uh those even with limited means, uh mobility means. And this idea that that you should be safe and comfortable. I think that also goes to how you think about being a sustainable place, not just a sustainable place from an environmental standpoint. But allow as well as housing, you know, providing a mix of a a mix of uses and uh housing for all income levels. You're recognizing that that's an essential part of being a sustainable place. And I think on the other side of this is is sort of the idea that you have culture here. You know, you're you're a community that celebrates the arts and and want to have. Uh the arts and the cultural aspects of your community embedded in the all aspects of downtown. And then that you want to be a u- unique place, you know, you want to have this ecosystem. That involves not just LL Bean and other national retailers, but that you have a a variety of local businesses that that can thrive there. And that this ecosystem is one that is is resilient. And I think fundamental to all of this is sort of the idea that you're you want to embrace the outdoors. And that this is not just, you know, a a aligned with your identity, but it's also something that you have these great natural resources uh very close by that you can take advantage of. So thi- this value set has allowed us to start to sort of look at. All of the ideas we've got and say, well, how can some fit in and some, how can some, um, you know, be improved, further improved? So, you know, when we've looked at sort of what's already going on, and I think one of the things as we go into this next phase of planning with you all is really sort of saying. Okay, there's a lot of stuff going on already. How can we start to engage folks where they already are, you know, and and start to talk to them about downtown? Um when they're, you know, coming and going from from a festival or a concert or or working, you know, working outside. And starting to engage people where they are because you already have a vibrant sort of set of things happening downtown. And then in addition to that, you know, looking at all the projects and initiatives that are already ongoing. You know, that that effort, those efforts need to continue as we progress the planning and sort of. The feedback loop with how these projects are progressing and how that can inform future planning is really critical. And I think that, you know, that was an essential part of making sure that we kind of looked through all of these elements and understood. How are these, you know, connected to the values? And how do these projects represent? Um, you know, how people think about the future of downtown? So that brings us to how do we, you know, how do we integrate not just all the good stuff you're already doing? But how can we start to address some of what, you know, might be the low hanging fruit, things that could be. Uh fundamental to to moving downtown forward? And there's a a a method that the planning community has sort of fallen into over the really. Aggressively over the last year with COVID, but over the last ten years, you know, our office helped coin the term here, what we call tactical urbanism. And it seems like a funny kind of walkie phrase, but it's a it's meant to engender some fun in some uh some. The aspect that you as a as an individual citizen can help. Make a difference with your community and and make some physical changes to it in a short term. And and that is really fundamental to, I think, a lot of what we've been thinking about around this early action plan is that tactical urbanism is. Is something that's not this, you know, this is art. But tactical urbanism is something that actually moves you closer to your long term vision for your downtown. And the example here is they took a extra piece of street out and created a a public plaza. You know, and and they wanted to actually test that idea in the real world. So they went out and did this over the weekend. To see if it would work and to see if those businesses would would improve and to see if people would actually come from the neighborhood to spend time here. And the idea here is tactical urbanism is a way for you to really. Engage directly with those that are going to benefit from from an idea. And to bring the community together, not just around a a workshop or or a plan on a on a on a piece of paper. But around the physical environment that they want are talking about improving. And it can be as little as cones, you know, to extend a sidewalk. Or, you know, engaging in a pop up market at that same location to really think about how, you know, you can repair the street edge and really create a place there. To very small interventions, the idea that chalk paint and a nice stencil could, you could pop up. A bicycle boulevard in an afternoon and really test these ideas to say, how can we improve our our community as as citizens? And this is not just sort of demonstration projects. This is really meant to actually inform ongoing dialogue about future plans. So when we do this with communities, we we, you know, we involve all the stakeholders, the, you know, the DPW folks, engineering folks. Um and then we also measure what's happening. We measure before, we measure during, we count what's going on. So that that can really inform how we think about future efforts and future plans. And these types of projects range from the very small to very quick. All the way to the very formal, you know, that with lots of stakeholders involved. And the reason we do this is we found that planning is never over. Planning is always continuing. You know, communities are never finished. Your downtown will never be done. There's always room for improvements and things are always changing. So the idea here is we're kind of going from learning ideas to get out there and build some things. You know, create some projects and then measure them and see what happens. And then we do that again. So this idea is that there's some small, very pilot projects that could happen this summer. That would start to test some of these things we've heard from you all over the last few months. And these could be something that goes up for one day. You know, it could be something that's up for a month, you know, a real demonstration project. It could be something that might be there all winter or all summer. Um and then we've done these where they they actually, you know, are interim designs that are meant to be there for for multiple years. And then if you're lucky, you can you can really fine tune these projects so that 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 real capital projects are put in place. What we find, having had a few projects go through the cat, this whole cycle now. Is that by using the tactical urbanism approach. You're 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 very confident in spending those uh those capital dollars to change streets or stay in public spaces or do projects because. There has been a number of iterations and the plans have improved throughout the process. And I think, you know, we we've sort of been in awe over the last six months or the last twelve months since last summer. Of all of these parklets and dining decks that just a number of years ago, that would take multiple. Months of planning to get one of these installed have gone out. And 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 really provided a response to the the requirements of COVID and social distancing. And kept a lot of uh restaurants and small businesses alive during the pandemic. Um so I think what we found is that this tactical approach is a real. Fluid way and and really low low stress way for communities to rethink how parts of their downtowns work. So what we've done in the early action plan is kind of kind of whittled down some of the. Uh the tactics that we've seen from other places that might be applicable and provide you with a palette of things that that might start to address some of the. Opportunities there in Freeport. So here's those eight. And and when you look through the report, you'll see all of the sort of details about what. You know, what those tactics involve and who needs to be involved. And then as we were going through all the feedback, we started to kind of. Associate opportunities in downtown and those we call the actions. And then how do those actions align with the values that we've, you know, that we've heard from the community? And what partners or what local folks need to be involved to make those actions possible? And what are the potential impacts? So as we've structured all of these, we've tried to make sure that this the sort of system of feedback is is built into it. So it always sort of tests these values. You know, test these opportunities that we're seeing uh from folks. So that these projects will go on to inform the longer term planning and really make a better plan for the future of downtown. So I'll take you through a sort of, uh, you know, baker's dozen here. There's twelve of them that we, or thirteen of them, excuse me. That we think might be, you know, things that are manageable that you could get done in 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 several weeks or a couple of months. So the first one here is really what I've been thinking of as your kind of hundred percent corner. You know, it's a location in downtown that I think, you know, as a visitor, you know, I've always sort of, you know, pictured it when I think of Freeport. Um and then, you know, when we walked around with with everyone a few months ago, we we really asked people to sit there and and and. Look at that space and grade it. And overall, it's below average. So we think you go, we think you need to do better. You know, this is a, you you know, the kind of key intersection near downtown. You know, it's a front door to the LL Bean campus, you know, it's a main access down Bow Street to other destinations outside of downtown. So we think this this intersection is really a a potential place to really improve. Things uh at a fu- fundamental level. And when I mean fundamental, it's it's the walking in the comfort of folks who are in downtown. So as we talked about earlier, if folks drive to downtown for anything they do, they've actually become a pedestrian, whether you're a visitor, you're a. You know, you're a young person walking from school or or you're just, you know, you know, going about your daily business in downtown. But what we look at in this in this intersection is that the highway. Has kind of overtaken this area. And knowing the history of Bow Street and and the idea that this was where, you know, the long tree trunks would come down and go down to the water to to be fitted out for for ships. It makes sense for why this this sort of geometry works, but it what it doesn't make sense for is why that. You know, cars should be able to drive forty miles per hour around this this curve. So I think there's a way that we can celebrate the heritage of this intersection, but make it much more comfortable and friendly for for humans. And then I think you start to look at, you know, very interesting opportunities here where. You know, a- a- as a young person or an older person, you know, crossing this street at times might be very problematic. Because you've got quick moving vehicles or you've got lots of vehicles that are spaced and and you're kind of jockeying for an opportunity to move across. And then I think, you know, looking at this particular location, this is one of one of the few front doors that LL Bean has directly on Main Street. And we think this is an opportunity to really. You know, reclaim some of this street. You know, reclaim some of this street scape and provide it space for, for people. And provide an opportunity for people to spend time here and maybe even have some seating for, for L L Bean's cafe. And then I think you kind of turn around and you kind of look at the intersection. You know, you, what we've heard from everyone is that L L Bean is a, is a key sort of. Destination for people in downtown, you know, it's recognized as sort of an anchor for downtown. But then you've gone and chained it off from the rest of your downtown. So I think there's an opportunity here to really reopen this connection between. Parts of downtown at this key intersection. And I think the key here, and I understand having spent a lot more time here at this intersection now is that. Cars are moving way too quickly at times around this. So, you know, there's, there is a level of anxiety around stepping off the curb here and walking across. We think to make downtown better, starting to address that anxiety is sort of a, is a first step. You know, people should be, feel very easy of crossing the street. I'm over here, I want to go shop over there. I'm over here, I want to go eat over there. Getting around downtown should be very fluid. And what we've seen is that these intersections can be. You know, much more humanized, become much more human scaled. And, you know, if you see here, the, there's. An opportunity to really sort of make the crosswalks more about that being downtown. You know, and part of this is making cars behave like they're in downtown. And we started an ongoing dialogue with the Department of Transportation over the years that. Really says, okay, when you're on a highway going 45, 50 miles per hour, you're on a highway. But when you come into a main street where there's people, there's bicyclists, there's folks crossing the street, you need to behave like you're in a downtown. So that means you really want to travel at less than 25 miles per hour. You want to be able to make eye contact with folks who are trying to cross the street. And then I think you want to kind of, you know, make downtown function like you're, like you're in a village center where cars come to a stop. You kind of acknowledge someone crossing the street. There's that, there's that familiar sort of interaction of folks. And I think that would amplify this idea that you want to be a better village center. So the idea of putting crosswalks in, tightening up the intersection, making cars stop at this intersection. And then reclaiming some of this pavement space for human space. So when we look at this intersection, you know, at, at times it might feel very congested. But there is a good congestion and a bad congestion. And I think that's the idea of making sure that you balance all of these things in downtown. You actually want good congestion. You want folks traveling through town, seeing the stores, you know, sort of bumping into folks. So the bad congestion is those that are just upset about not getting through town quick enough. So how do we make this actually a, 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 really a celebratory intersection for downtown? That connects to nature with good landscaping, provides, you know, public seating for people to hold events at or. Do other types of programming, improved wayfind signage. And then making that connection across the street much more fluid. Um, and then I think there's this idea of allowing folks to park on Main Street. Sort of this kind of fundamental picture of a main street is where you have great street trees, you have, you know, folk. But busily parking and going in and out of stores. So there's this idea that you can actually slow things down by introducing some of those fundamentals back on the main street, like good landscaping. Good, good street parking. And then these places where you know you have to interact with the, the humans and the, and the vehicles that are traveling through town. And then I think there's this idea going back to, you know, sort of removing the chains. That you can create those chains that were a barrier, you could invite people to actually sit there and spend time and, and really enjoy being in this part of downtown. And this is not new. This is a, a widely utilized tactic. That we've seen throughout the country in small towns to big cities. Be used to sort of humanize these intersections and sort of, you know, explore this idea that these. Meeting places of very interesting street patterns were places that we used to celebrate as, as, as coming together. Opportunities for a community and we think Bow Street and, and where it meets Main Street is one of those. So then sort of shifting to, you know, the kind of aspects of streets to the, to the aspects of spending time in a place, you know, hanging out. And, and, and being with friends as the kids have told us. And we think there's a lot of kind of nooks and crannies around downtown that are really unique. And I think that, you know, you need to actually. Capitalize on these opportunities more and think about these places as assets rather than just places where you store trash. And I know there's a lot of sort of interesting interrelated properties in this little cluster, but in, in my mind. This sort of inter, interrelatedness is what makes this interesting. There's a lot of folks that could come together to make this courtyard a real. Interesting place to spend time and an interesting venue for people to, to do things with in downtown. And I think that's the biggest sort of effort here is start to think about these nooks and crannies around downtown, these courtyards. As platforms for people to do things. And that might be everything from holding a food truck rally, holding a beer garden, holding outdoor concert, out, more outdoor movies. You know, more outdoor events, outdoor markets. And that just this little courtyard that right now is really for parking and kind of the passersby's to go to the garage. Could actually be a real destination for downtown. So when we put these plans together, we thought, okay, well, how do you start to think about this place? And, and, and very quickly it was sort of realized, well, there's a couple of property owners, there's these, there's that. Well, these projects are tests. They're meant to be. Little efforts that you use to bring people together around these opportunities. So just the idea of creating a pop-up food festival in this, in this courtyard for one day. Could start to think about this place differently and then that could, what could that lead to? And I think this was interesting because there's a lot of front doors on here, even though it's a, a spot where you store trash. It's also a, a front door for a store. It's a front door to one of your main parking garages. You know, it, it's a, it's a cut through to get up to, to Freeport Village Station for shopping. You know, so I think there's a real opportunity here to, to think about this place differently. And this pop-up plaza idea, this pop-up courtyard, it could be applicable in other places downtown too. And I just really have to commend the local, uh, team that we've been working with, you know, they've actually got a few of these ideas out there already and. And, and popped up, you know, some, a pop-up concert, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So I think this idea is really just to get out there and try some things. So thinking about, you know, not just destinations to spend time, but how you interact with the streets. You know, it's really thinking about Main Street as a corridor of opportunity. That, you know, your main street, your downtown has a beginning and an end, it has these gateways. But it also has the experience of traveling through it. And when I look at this, I start to think, wow, this is really part of the highway still. You know, there's the cars are moving far too quickly at times. Or there's not enough, uh, behavioral elements for the driver to say, I'm in downtown, I need to behave like I'm in downtown. So what happens is if someone's moving too quickly. Their peripheral vision is closed off. Meaning they don't see those pedestrians that want to, you know, sort of try to cross the street or they don't see those local signs. So simply by closing, slowing the cars down in times of year when they're moving too quickly. We open up that peripheral vision. They pay more attention to those around them. They pay more attention to their environment. They might recognize a store they never went into. They, they might see someone trying to cross the street. So that idea of, of making the, the driver's experience more of a human scaled experience is I think essential. And then similarly, when, when, you know, in the summertime, when there are more vehicles and more people trying to get through downtown. There's the idea of creating a cadence, a, a way of moving through downtown that keeps things moving. But at a much slower rate so that you, rather than having chaos, you have a nice cadence and a rhythm to moving through downtown. And I think when I look at the street, I also think you have some wonderful partners in downtown, you know. Not, not just with Meeting House and the Historical Society, but, uh, you know, other elements of downtown that any, you know, that. Some downtowns would love to have right on their main street. And I think this intersection in particular. Open up a key opportunity in our minds to really celebrate the arts. And really make this moment here at this intersection, a place where. You stop cars, a place where you celebrate the arts, a place where you provide turning movements, a place where you make it easy for folks to cross. And this is called an intersection mural. This is a really, uh, 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 a celebratory sidewalk. And a, and an intersection that would, would not just anchor Meeting House in the, in the kind of the view to Meeting House from across the street. But also provide a place for cars to sort of start to understand that they're in downtown. And that they need to sort of behave like they're in downtown by coming to a stop, letting folks cross the street. And what we see is that communities come together all over the country to do these types of murals. And really we see this internationally now that, that, that kind of recognizing that the users, they are, there are these key locations in communities. That should be different, that should represent, you know, not just, uh, a, a crossing of the street, but really anchor the, the community. Through its, uh, through its artwork on the street. So then, you know, looking at the other side of downtown, kind of thinking about this block. Of downtown has been a real treat for us because, you know, I think the rhythm of all these storefronts. The signage, the elements of, of the streetscape, they are, are very. Traditional to what great main streets are made up of, you know, the smaller stores. You know, the, the, the nice awning here, the fact that you have places to sit down. We thought, okay, how can we start to sort of provide further enjoyment for folks who are coming to this block? And then sort of looking at an interesting relationship between. You know, this block being one-sided where the, the buildings to the, uh, to the north are much, you know, kind of pulled back much farther off the street. And we sort of realized that this is a, a, a place where cars might start to change their behavior as they kind of come out of downtown or. Come into downtown. So we thought, let's actually start to. Celebrate this area more and, and, and we think building a parklet where you could actually. Create a destination for folks to spend time on this block would help to celebrate it even more. And then just reworking some of those pavement markings, you could even find some more parking or loading on this block. You know, so kind of really thinking about how this, this, this parklet could, could create a new. Place for people to hang out and spend time, you know, kind of, you know, get something to eat or something to drink and, and, and enjoy time here with friends. And it could even be two or three parking spaces long, you know, the idea that this could really be a place. That sort of, uh, uh, is a sense of energy around this block. And we see this, all forms of these parklets exist, um, you know, everything from just painted. Jersey barricades to really, you know, custom-built, uh, kind of wood furniture. So I think there's a real opportunity here with sort of that, you know, northern block there on Main Street to, to really create a, a unique. Place to hang out. And then similarly to, to the intersection out from Meeting House is this idea that there are these other locations around. Your journey through downtown along Main Street that need to behave better. You know, we know that, uh, you know, that, that folks think of Starbucks as a third place and that, that kids come to it quite often. But we also know that there are these destinations that happen at this, you know, going down to parking or coming across to, to go to L L Bean. And that this is sort of an interesting intersection that we think could be. Behaved better. And then I think also knowing that there, the. The sort of relationship to the parking lots in the rear could also be enhanced. So thinking again about this idea of art and bringing the arts into Main Street more. There could be a really interesting, uh, uh, mural sidewalk extension. Really sort of bringing together this idea that, that cars should stop here, let folks walk back and forth. And that there could be additional opportunities for seating, whether that's in the front with the, with the sidewalk extensions. Or if it's in the back there up by the parking lot where that, you know, sort of grove of trees could be taken advantage of and really be a, a nice little. Kind of informal place to, to get your coffee and spend time or kind of rest while you're walking to and from other shops on this side of town. And you can see here that, you know, as you're traveling through downtown as a, as a driver. This is an intersection that, you know, you're not sure, are you turning right to go into the parking? Can you turn left to go into L L Bean's? Parking lots back behind downtown. So this is a real sort of opportunity to kind of slow things down and, and take away some of the confusion. And we see all sorts of, of, of examples of this, uh, from other places. So similarly, but sort of more on the gateway opportunity here is as you're coming into downtown and sort of right in front of, of Town Hall. We think there's a real opportunity and, and, you know, I know that there's different conditions here, both when the school is in session and when it's not. But again, this is sort of not just a place to maybe help rationalize some of the car movements more, but also to celebrate. The beginning of Main Street. I think this sort of block. Not just here, but all the way sort of in front of that entire block to West Street with, with Town Hall is an opportunity to really start to indicate to people that they have arrived. In downtown Freeport. We think that can be done very easily again with this idea of extending the sidewalks. Really, you know, humanizing the crosswalks and really celebrating this idea of improved landscape on, on your streets. And we've seen this in other places where they'll borrow potted plants and potted trees from a local nursery. And, and really this is meant to bring the community together around testing these ideas. And perhaps even installing another parklet here to, to enhance this gateway moment even further. And you can see from this video that. The idea of, of, of providing a stop. And slowing cars down would actually maybe make this more of an intersection that functions better. Where, you know, people would take turns going back and forth, you know, folks would be more prevalent to walk back and forth. And that you kind of would eliminate some of the jockeying where cars may be moving too quickly or not knowing who's going next. And kind of take that jockeying aspect that creates that informality out of the equation and provide a little bit more of a rhythm to getting through downtown. And as we think about this part of downtown, something else occurred to us that, that, that Town Hall. And, you know, in, in, in this front yard and the sort of generally the property surrounding. The Town Hall is a real opportunity for, for the community. And, you know, we know this is already, uh, being thought about with the conceptual plans we've seen for the front of, of Town Hall, but we, we think you should go further. We think you should really engage with the other owners of the property around Town Hall. And really start to think about this block as a destination in downtown. As a platform for doing all of the things that we've heard from the youth that they want to do in downtown. And a platform for connecting downtown very intentionally to the outdoors even further. And this is an example of really a pop-up adventure park. This idea that you have food, you have, you have markets. And you have all of these outdoor activities from skateboarding to scootering to pickleball, all happening in one place. And, and this is in a parking lot of a, of a shopping mall. But what we see is that when you do these pop-up skateboard parks. It really brings the community together, i- i- you know, it, it, and so often in downtown, skateboarding is sort of shunned and kind of, you know, put, put away or moved out to something. We think there's an opportunity here with the Town Hall area to really invite that into your community and into your downtown. And we were lucky enough to do one of these in, in, in a, a couple of our projects here. And, and really it brings a sort of aspect of, of the outdoors into what is normally a very sort of downtown sport. And then I think there's a lot of other opportunities to connect this block, you know, West Street is, is a, a, a kind of desire line to other parts of town. That your active living plan has pointed out. And then we think that they're, you know, talking about this area with, with folks on the town walk, you know, the kind of wooded area is a really unique part of downtown that people appreciate. So we think kind of opening up this idea that this block is kind of a platform for lots of different things is an interesting idea. And one of those might be an adventure park where you actually bring in a pump track, you bring in a temporary pop-up skateboard park. You maybe have other, other types of, of sort of action sport endeavors happening here so that the youth can really come here and enjoy it. And then I think you can do, all of that kind of displaced parking can be pushed to the street. Where you actually have street parking at this location that helps to identify it as, as being the beginning of downtown. And, and starting, you know, helping to slow the, the traffic as they come into downtown. So we think there's a lot of ways that the, these, you know, kind of asphalt that you have in this area, uh, around the Town Hall. Can be rethought as an, as an opportunity, uh, for adventure rather than a place to store cars. And then I think looking at the streets surrounding, uh, this block is a way to start to think about how not just Main Street could be calmed. And, and taught to behave as if you're in downtown, but these other side streets. And sort of neighborhood streets could also be enhanced further to make it. Comfortable to walk from the parking lots to Main Street and to the other destinations around downtown. So we think this is a real opportunity to take advantage of some of these kind of fundamental tactics, um, that, that line up with your values. Then I think, you know, some of these, what we think are fairly, uh, uh, straightforward. Opportunities are this connection between, you know, another one of L L Bean's front doors. And the kind of across the street with, with Freeport Village Station and the other shops here. And that this is an opportunity to, to really celebrate that sort of front door aspect, the kind of. You know, man, you know, kind of middle of Main Street. And, and really think about this as another opportunity to, uh, to perhaps partner with L L Bean and to, and to really, you know, build an intersection mural here that, that invites people to sort of stop and spend time and sort of. Interact with all the various stores that are around this location. And then I think, you know, this builds to the idea of how do you get around downtown? And we're talking a lot about making sure people feel comfortable with walking. And that's part of, you know, sort of every great place we know starts with being a good, good place for walking. You know, then I think if you can do that, all these other elements of what downtown has to offer for folks become easier. And part of that is just sort of how do you generally get around town? And I thought it was really interesting that you're more interested in sending people back to the highway from your parking lots than to the other destinations in town. So I think there's an opportunity to think about wayfinding much more locally rather than just moving cars to town and out of town. And I think that goes to, you know, not just access to parking lots, but also access to other amenities in downtown. And you clearly recognize the train station as one of those destinations that needs to have wayfinding. But I think it's a whole system of wayfinding that I know folks have been talking about. And, you know, I looked at this sign and up until this afternoon, I still struggled with it. But now I understand how this works, where the arrow on the left is to the things below it and the arrow on the right is to the things below it. But I think there's a, this was sort of an emblematic representation to me that wayfinding downtown should be a coherent system and be aligned with the marketing and the way you think about downtown and the way you attract folks to downtown and the way that you as locals think about moving around downtown. And, you know, as someone from away, you know, kind of, oh, well, I know, I saw a sign for free parking, but where is the free parking? And I think there's like these very little hits of signage that could really help the system work much, much better. And I think, you know, I really have to commend Visit Freeport. They put a lot of effort into the wayfinding and to this really comprehensive map that they have and maintain. So I think this as not just a marketing vehicle for those visiting Freeport, but really as a way people just generally use and get around downtown is really thinking about how you can build on the good work they've already done and start to think about this more systematically throughout downtown. But don't spend years doing it. I think in a month, we could have signs printed from FedEx and zip tied to some of the poles around downtown and start to test this. And we can start to inform people about other great destinations you have in downtown. And this gets to, you know, that idea of what other great destinations can you start to build? And we know that people are interested in outdoor markets, you know, whether it's, you know, whether it's, you know, antiques outdoors or food markets outdoors. This idea that there's this informality to commerce that could be very local and you could start to bring local folks into downtown. And this is start, you know, there are lots of places this could happen, not just with pop-up retail and the vacant storefronts, but into some of these areas that you have leftover, the leftover courtyards, some of the larger pedestrian promenades. You know, this idea that you have a lot of opportunities for markets and just to think about these platforms and start to think about them as a system of interrelated opportunities. And this gets to one of them, you know, I think a lot of folks came up with this idea about food truck Fridays. This idea that you want to have more opportunity to have really interesting food. And I thought, well, go talk to the wonderful restaurateurs you already have in Freeport and have them invite their friends to bring their food trucks downtown. And we've done this before, you know, and we've done this in conjunction with other ideas that we wanted to test. So this one was a food truck lunchtime on Fridays, excuse me, this was on Thursdays. And we were also testing removing one lane of traffic from this street. So we sort of put the food trucks in a really interesting spot, which was parked on the sidewalk. So we think there's places that you could test these ideas of really bringing the community together around not just one of these tactics and one of these projects, but multiple ones. So here you see pop-up cycle infrastructure. You see a parklet or a dining deck to enhance some of the restaurants on this street. You see a pop-up art festival that could provide platforms for outdoor music and outdoor arts education. And you start to see that, you know, bringing all these together around a specific place can start to demonstrate how this could be in the future. And I think that's the main part of a lot of these is that we want to start to think about long term. What do we want downtown? And one of the best tactics for that is what we call a better block. You know, it's where you really get out there and you say, we're going to take a weekend and build what we think this should look like. And we're going to, we're going to mock up everything in the real world. And we've seen this in really down and out places and really small towns to really big cities and really starting saying, how do we want this place to function? Because it's forgotten or it's underutilized or it's empty. How do we want it to function? So in this example, which is a small town in Western Mass here, you know, they really wanted a Mexican restaurant. They didn't have one. So a few of them got together and said, we'll do a taco bar over the weekend. And then they said, well, we want wider sidewalks and we want cycling infrastructure. We want, we want all these things in our downtown. Don't wait, let's go out there and try them and see what they feel like. So they added crosswalks, they added that cycle track, they added bump outs for landscaping. And what we find is that when you get together to do a better block, you bring the community together to not just talk about planning, but to do planning, to really make their neighborhood better. And what we find is that it's building that social connections, that social capital around a place that is actually the most important thing. And I think that's what we really want to do with you in Freeport this summer is to bring more folks together to help make downtown better. And knowing that a lot of the kids spend time at CBS, we thought, you know, this might be a good opportunity for a better block. And then we heard from folks, you know, older folks who, you know, are going there to get medication or to visit there for stuff they need from CBS that they might, you know, need to, you know, sit down and relax for a few minutes after they've done their errand. But we think the front of CBS could be this nice porch for all of those folks to interact better and that this would be a really interesting and very easy better block that you all could accomplish very quickly. And this brings me to sort of the kind of last project. And I know we've been going for a while here, but this one in my mind is an important one because it provides you three things. It allows you to connect downtown to nature, to some of the destinations you have in the countryside that we know you find are important. And it provides you an opportunity to bring the community together and let them do something that they may have never done before. And as we were kind of thinking about this, this what we call a slow roll, I asked some folks on the planning team if they've ever done this bike ride. And none of them have, and none of them have done this bike ride either. And I thought that was interesting because these are places that are not a far bike ride away. And I think it's, you know, you would never really think that they are connected in that way. For example, you know, a 27 bike ride for me is a short bike ride between meetings sometimes. And I think that's the idea that you want to make sure that downtown feels connected to these places. And the only way to really do that is to go out and physically connect them. So we think you should do a slow roll this summer, bring the community together and pick a route and go ride it together. Gently, slowly, you know, just so you can talk about it while you're doing it. And what we find is when communities start to do this together, they start to think about how their community not just uses bicycles, but how they connect places within their community differently because they've all experienced that connection together. So we think, you know, looking at the cycling data and looking at the running data, there are lots of folks that are using these streets and these roads around Freeport. Go out there and pick a route together, you know, maybe it's this one, maybe it's others. And then go ride it and talk about how you can make that connection better. Because we think that there's some fundamental values around how Freeport downtown could be a trailhead for all of these natural wonders you have in this part of Maine. So this is really our call to action. You know, there's this long tradition of people making their neighborhoods better. We think you need to participate in that. So we're challenging you to have one or two or three of these pilot projects up and running in a month. You know, by the first of July, we'd like to see you have some of this going on. Other communities have done it. Putting a few of these together in 30 days is an easy task if you put your mind to it. So we're going to help you with that a little bit. You know, we're going to hold some office hours here tomorrow. You know, as kind of talking about this over the last, you know, day or two, we really realized, let's, this was a lot to absorb, let's give folks an opportunity to really talk with us a little bit more if they need to. So we'll have office hours from four to six on June 2nd, which is tomorrow. And then I think we're going to also announce a second office hours and we'll send out an email with the link to that office hours. So make sure you sign up and register for the email list. And then we want to, we want you all to, you know, if you're interested in this even a little bit, sign up. You know, not just for the office hours, but sign up to volunteer for a pilot project. You know, so go to the website and let us know, even if you're just interested in a, you know, kind of very casual fashion. Let us know. And those, if you're really interested, tell us which one you want to help out on. Because I think there's a lot of energy around a few of these already and we want to make sure that we can help, you know, help kind of build that momentum. Because we're kind of, we're going into the next phase of planning, which we really need your input on. You know, the planning is not done. You know, there's a lot of topics we have to continue to talk about. Housing being one of those, traffic, parking. You know, there's lots of things that make downtown really work and we need to build on that. So the second phase of this work is really going to be about interacting with you all throughout the summer, both at those events that you already have planned. You know, we might have a table or a tent there set up for you to interact with us on. It could be helping assist with some of these pilot projects and really helping you, you know, kind of measure them or install them. And then we're going to have what we're calling the Downtown Design Week. That's going to, we're looking for some dates in September to do that. Well, we'll really bring everyone together, whether, you know, we'll work with the COVID restrictions at the time. But bring folks together around workshops, around focus groups on specific topics. And we'll really start to visualize some of these elements in longer terms so that you can really start to understand what things downtown might look and feel like in 10, 20 years in the future. And then that will roll into the work during next fall, which would really be to pull together the plan for downtown. So I know that was a lot. I really appreciate everyone hanging in there and listening to all of this. This is, the report is going to be up on the website now, I think. So if you want to go and check it out, you can. We'll get this presentation up there shortly as well. And really stay in touch, you know, fill out the volunteer form if you're up for helping out and rolling up your sleeves here over the next month. And make sure that you send us your comments on any other ideas we might have missed. So thank you, and I guess I'll open it up for questions from the council.
Great, thanks very much, Russ. I am completely invigorated by this presentation and can't wait to go find a bucket of paint and a roller and start painting the town. So I appreciate the inspiration for that.
Of course.
We still have quite a bit of members of the public in the attendees column. And so I guess before we open that part of the meeting for initial comments and questions, we'll kind of define that time. But I just wanted to give counselors a chance to voice any initial reactions or ask some sort of high level questions of Russ or other members of the group putting this together in terms of just initial reactions. Russ mentioned we're going to have chances to sort of cogitate on some of those questions over the next couple of days here with office hours tomorrow, potentially another shot on Thursday. But any counselors have some initial feedback and questions? Then we'll go to the public, Counselor Bradley. You got to unmute your mic, Ed.
Like John, I think this is an amazing start to what will be a successful way to rethink our downtown. All projects that begin somewhere, they get better as people look and feel and add their inputs. I have been fortunate enough to talk to people who are involved in doing this, from Russ to Mary and Tony as a counselor. And I very much appreciate their openness to hearing things that, for me. I also very much appreciate that the idea of the connection between the arts and the Meeting House and the Historical Society are included in this, I think that's a critical thing. My overarching question is, and Russ struck it. He talked about the interconnection between the places in town as being the core of any long-term vision and that these are things that will try out places. But I guess my question is, how does that sense of the interconnectivity of the town evolve? You know, what are the ways in which either principal group or the community connectors or the town council gets to the point where we say, this is really the route that we think connects all the places in town that are of interest and are of value? Or will that just be what happens as a result of picking places to develop? I'm not sure I understand how that all works. Russ, that's to you.
Yeah. No, Counselor Bradley, thank you. So I think there's, you know, having done this for a long time now, you know, there's a sense that the community always sort of, you know, the sort of getting as many minds as possible into this is always important because what we find is that the good ideas start to repeat themselves. You start to hear a lot of different things from people. And then we start to hear similar things from people from all different parts of town or, you know. And I think it's that opportunity to start to bring folks together in different ways so that they can start, we can start to hear from them, oh yeah, that, I always walk that route from the library into town. Or I always walk that route from Bow Market over to where I park near CBS. You know, there's these interesting experiences that people have that we want to try and find more and more opportunities from. So I think that's part of it. And then, you know, that will inform the kind of longer term sort of planning around those routes. And then I think there's the idea of building momentum and sort of tackling one project at a time and seeing where those other opportunities open up. And that's the sort of bottom up approach that we've seen with tactical urbanism efforts, that that bottom up approach actually can get things figured out sometimes a lot more quickly. And I think when you couple those two together, it gets really powerful where you have, okay, well, we know folks want to, you know, walk from the library into downtown this way, through this path. Because people have been talking about it and they're doing it. Or is there another way where we could do it? And let's test that over a Saturday and see what we experience. And I think there's sort of a kind of parallel system that really, really sort of seems messy at times because, you know, building towns are messy. Those are, these are hard, complex things to figure out. So that's why we sort of say, okay, let's actually set up a system where we can try it as many different ways as possible and set up a way for us to all kind of talk about it so that we can kind of get back to as many people giving us input as possible. So I hope that kind of gave you a little bit of the thought process here.
Okay. One thing, and I'll add on to that, Ed, that one of the things that we're seeing as ideas come out is businesses and the neighbors of businesses are coming together to say, what could we do there? So I think it's the, it becomes, it's becoming more a sense of being just by thinking about how to do these ideas. So I think that that's an important part, that enthusiasm of helping people to see what can be.
So that's fine. And you're really talking about how do you gather creativity and test creativity in an iterative way to figure out what are good ideas? But as I look at what you have presented in your action plan and what's going on in town and what businesses are already doing, you know, there are multiple ways to organize Freeport into pathways or courses or routes. And at some point, there will be, I won't call them conflicts, but tensions between those ideas. How does that get resolved in a process like this? So that as you work toward it, if you don't get consensus, who decides what goes where? Is it who can come up with the money? Is it the principal group? Is it FEDC and the street gang? I'm just sort of trying to get a feel for how people think this process will unfold. Or is it not?
I have a better, that clarifies your question a bit. Thanks, Ed, for taking this over. Because I think this is an important part, kind of going into the longer term planning that happens in phase two and phase three, that if we do this properly and we kind of can set up these interactive sort of ongoing discussions as we start to, you know, produce more and more drawings, more and more draft policies or draft, you know, draft materials, we want your help co-creating that. So we'll be having opportunities for people to, you know, interact with us throughout that process. And what we often find is that good ideas start to resonate and they gain traction. But then there's these tensions that are inevitably created. And ideally, we have a kind of open dialogue around those tensions and start to talk about, well, what are they? And how can we sort of identify what those tensions are and start to think through, if we can't solve that right now, what is a process we can use later on to solve it when we have more information that's needed? So I think that's part of it. And then also, at the end of the day, you know, I think a vision plan like this would likely come back to this body to be, you know, to kind of decide on and approve. So I think there's an aspect of, you know, making sure that you all are well informed around, well, what are the things that we don't have consensus on? And how might you get consensus later on when it's really needed? And I think being clear, so that's where these plans, we call it a vision plan because there might be multiple pathways to move forward on. So it's a bit of a choose your own adventure in that regard. And we want to make sure that we're giving you the tools to make those decisions when they- And we want to make sure that we're giving you the tools to make those decisions when they, when they're needed in the future. Cause we might not be around anymore. We might be long gone and you all are at a point where, well, wait a minute, is it, there's these conflicts here, which way do we go? And ideally between the values and a handful of other elements that are in the vision plan, you'll be able to make a, a, a confident decision, man. Does that make sense?
It helps. Thanks very much.
Council Riley?
So I, just by chance happened to have to go into a downtown Portland today. And I was, uh, very interested to see that they were setting up again. The blocking off the streets and, and the parklets, uh, there. Because they determined apparently that it was a very successful for the businesses within, uh, Portland. So, you know, we don't have to go back to it. I've been in Europe where you have walking streets all over the place that used to be the main street. And, and now it's walking streets and it's got all these different, uh, vendors going through. And it has absolutely no effect on the, uh, brick and mortar restaurants. It actually increases traffic into brick and mortar restaurants going through. So, and then, uh, listening to Phil Wagner and, and his derogatory saying, you know, I hate sacrificing parking spaces, but I kind of like this idea. And he didn't really realize that if we take out the taxi stand and add the two parking spaces in front of, uh, Sherman's bookstore, that he gains three spaces and loses nothing because all he's lost is a loading area, which, uh, doesn't get used for more than maybe, uh, an hour out of the day. So he, who, somebody who was vehemently opposed to anything that would risk, um, uh, cause him to lose a parking space is willing to give up his space that's, uh, out in front of him. So, um, I, I think the idea is there and the cost of doing these parklets is minimal. Minimal going through, and it's one of the easiest ways to do it. Complete Streets Committee, as I said, uh, earlier on, was, uh, very high on, uh, working on to, to work together with you all to, uh, establish, uh, these little things that affect our roadways. And where they can reduce the speed, uh, can improve the safety of the highway. You know, at one point, downtown Freeport had parking on the street all the way through. And then for some grand design, we, uh, we changed it. And it maybe it is time to come back. And maybe that period was when we, uh, eliminated parking was before the days that 295 was built. And so now it is time to reestablish, uh, a calmer, uh, area in downtown. So it makes it more pedestrian friendly, more, uh, friendly to visitors, uh, more relaxing. And then we just need to draw the restaurants to come in and have the fiddlers out on the street and go from there. But some of this doesn't cost very much at all.
All right, before we, um, invite the public to maybe ask a couple of questions of Russ, any other counselors, uh, Council of Bilch?
Uh, Russ, just a question on process, what remains, what work remains in phase one? Are you guys available to help facilitate these projects and shepherd them through to completion? Or is that not in scope for phase one?
Yeah, I mean, this, so where we're at now is the conclusion of phase one. So I, I ideally we've, we've rallied the local planning team there with, with Mary and Tony and others enough that, that they can kind of, and I, like I said, they've done a really good job of kind of getting energy going already. But really sort of the phase two work for us would begin when we start to, um, you know, kind of, kind of help facilitate some of the pilot projects and kind of get the, the prep work going for the design week later in September. So that was how we, we planned it originally.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, we still have a, um, pretty hefty list of the public here, uh, some of whom may be interested in asking questions of Russ and/or, uh, uh, others on, on the Zoom screen. Uh, so Will, uh, Peter, if you're available, um, to open up the, um, the process here for any attendees wishing to, uh, ask questions of Russ or the rest of the group here. Please use the raise hand feature, um, on your Zoom screen and then we'll move folks over, uh, to be able to talk live. Uh, looks like we have at least one to start. Katrina?
Hey Katrina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, Katrina Van Bruhe, Freeport resident. Um, I loved all the ideas that you posted. Uh, looks very exciting. One thing I did not see that I would like to harp upon, for those of you who know me, uh, fenced in dog park. We need a dog park. There's so many people in this town that own dogs. And I know there's one beautiful dog. Um, my own dog does not walk well on a leash. So Leon Gorman is not an option for me. So that's one thing I'd love to see. And another thing I would love to see would be more public bathrooms. I work at CVS and we get pestered 20, 25 times a day from people who want a bathroom and we don't have it. So that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Katrina. You, you know, it was interesting. I, I failed to mention this, but, um, being not just family friendly, but pet friendly was, was a pretty fundamental value that came out of all the input we've had. And I'm not a dog owner myself, so please don't hold that against me. But I think there's, you know, I think there is a real connection to making sure that, you know, downtown is, is pet friendly. Um, so we haven't found a spot for a dog park. So if anyone has any good ideas, that, you know, that's, that's something we can continue to work on.
Katrina, thank you for looking out for all of our young ones. I know that you've even helped out some of our kids when they've been short a couple of pennies here. Thanks for looking out for our kids.
Next, Andy Arsenal.
Hello?
There we go. How you doing, Andy?
I'm doing well. Uh, I'm really excited about the presentation. I think, uh, it's a good start for downtown Freeport. One of the things I'd like to emphasize is that, uh, it needs to be, it's nice to see it's sort of an organic process. I think we get bogged down in regulations and all these ordinances and, oh, it has to be a certain way. And what I see Russ and the principal group bringing is a really organic process. Process of developing any town over a hundred or 200 years like Freeport has really been organic. In the last 25 or 30 years, we've gotten to this really static sort of rules and regulations and we can't do it. And we have to have a meeting and then we have to draw an ordinance. And one of the things I like about it is we've drawn into, let's, let's try something. Doesn't work, we'll try something different. If it doesn't work, we'll try something different. And I think we want to do this because we don't want to be in a spot five, 10, 15 years from now saying, I wished we'd tried something. I was here when the food truck fell apart, when Freeport fell apart. A lot of the people remember that storefronts were empty, things weren't going well. And it took a while to get it going. So I'm glad that we're doing this now. I really want to thank the people that are participating in this and I'm really looking forward to, you know, maybe some more parking on Main Street. I remember when it came off, uh, in the eighties, it wasn't anything to do with I-295. It just was this giant pedestrian mall idea. And, um, it did speed up traffic through town. It did cause problems. It did change traffic patterns. So I think what Russ and Logan and the principal group and the people involved, it's a really good thing that's I see coming. Lifelong resident, I'm pretty excited. And, uh, I really applaud what's going on and I want to see people move forward. Don't get bogged down in all the details, just try something organic and just move forward. Because if we don't, we'll be behind the eight ball. So thanks for this tonight. And I think it's great and we need to just get going. And, uh, I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I just want to, I just want to do one shout out with, um, Caroline and Peter and the town are being so supportive and really helping to think through, how can we work through these things? So we've got a tremendous amount of support right now with the town to help get these things done. So shout out to a great team working on these things. Thank you, Andy.
And we've got Greg Joyce and Mary Ellen and Sarah, one, two, three, four, or Sarah might be Sally Walsh, I think, if I remember correctly. Hold on. Hi Greg.
Hey, hey folks, it's Greg Micho. I'm the chair of, uh, the Complete Streets Committee. This is the second time I've heard the presentation and I'm just as excited about it now as I was when I first heard it. In fact, you know, I, I very much want to, I want to lead one of these efforts. I, I would love to see a big mural in front of Holbrook Street where the high school is and have a big falcon. Or put a big, uh, logo F right in front of, right in front of that. And while we're at it, put it in front of Kendall too, because we have a school down there. Um, I, I actually was going to say, make the same point that, uh, the previous person, Andy said. And that is, you know, we, we can't be steeped in too much process. Um, I, I would want to know who's, who's the first person I need to call and, um, understand that I, I don't have to go through five committees. One that meets three weeks from now, uh, to get an approval. If we can do that quickly, man. Uh, I, I think we've really got something going. So anyway, I'm drinking the Kool-Aid and I can't wait, can't wait to get started.
Thanks Greg. Uh, next up Joyce. Joyce, Mary Ellen, Sally, in that order.
Well, I think principal group has done a wonderful job of reaching out to so many members of our community and then putting all of the information together. I'm surprised that it wasn't a three-hour presentation. I would just caution people that that was a wonderful list of 13 projects and ideas. But keep your eyes open. There are so many other places within our downtown area that we could do things without costing a lot of money. Of course, mine, the one I champion, I like Memorial Park. I'd love to see a gazebo and have Friday food carts there with a concert in the gazebo. So, you know, but just keep our eyes open and don't just stick to the 13. Thank you.
And, and Joyce, I actually thought you'd have that up before Memorial Day, so we didn't include it.
I thought about it. I, permits are waiting.
Thanks Joyce. Uh, Mary Ellen?
There. Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Carew, and I'm sorry, I didn't think to unmute. I just want to thank, um, the principal group and the council and FEDC for just starting this ball rolling. I want to thank principal group for including the people. Uh, I was on the downtown walk and, uh, we didn't do anything that we were supposed to do in the downtown walk because we were supposed to stop and talk with whoever our leader was. Well, we didn't, we, we sort of kept walking and kept talking and talked about what we were, what we were supposed to be talking about, but in such an excited manner. I'm planning to meet with a couple of people about a project that I think we should do for some of this kind of stuff. I also want to be out there with a paint roller with you, John. And, um, and who was the other gentleman who just said, was it Greg? You can lead a project, I'll be on it. I got paint closed, that's just fine. I, what I loved about all of this is what happened on the downtown walk was I got this feeling of agency. I could, it wasn't like we were saying they ought to do this. We were saying, we ought to do this. And that just, that made me so excited because I want to be one of the people doing it. I want to say thank you for including so much of the arts and culture in, in your plan because it is a vital part of what's happening to Freeport. And it's, it's a vital part of what's going to happen in the creative economy. And I'm so excited about all of that. And it's just a great time for this to happen, coming out of the pandemic where our society has basically been changed or given an opportunity to change. And now we have these new ideas that are saying, we should change this because that's what we want. Thank you for asking us what we want. Thank you for synthesizing all of this stuff and helping us analyze what it means. And thank you for the idea of testing. So we don't have to be afraid to be wrong and like we're investing a lot of money. And, and, um, I, I just want to say yay to the falcon at the end of Holbrook Street. And thank you so much, Russ, for saying building towns are messy because yes, they are. And I, um, they'll be more messy before they're done because they're never done. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Mary Ellen. Uh, next up Sally.
Sally and then Joe.
How's that? Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. Um, I grew up here when this town was tree lined and cars parked on the main street. And business owners used to run across the street to play practical jokes on each other. So any thought of bringing that type of environment back would be fun. Um, I had a couple thoughts when I was hearing the presentation. One, um, for the residents who are going to be here when all the tourists leave, it would be an interesting comparison for me to see when we do some of the, um, interesting like parklets in the center of town where we want people to come and stay and shop and do things like that versus some of the things that are already happening down like in the art district with the historical society. The food trucks are going to be down there. You've got the Bartol library is going to be of a new tenant. Howard Place, the Art Alliance Center down, there's a whole stuff that's already going on. So if there's an opportunity to do two things, one in the center of town with parklets and the economic development, and one that would see how it would be, uh, created and for a lasting use, um, after the tourist season is over. Uh, I think it would be interesting to see how those two will contrast with each other. That's all.
Thank you, Sally. Hey, Joe, you're up.
Hey, hi, uh, yeah, great presentation. And this is Joe Miliacho, Freeport. And the only thing, uh, you don't need to answer now, but I need to comment earlier a little bit is I'm hoping that principal can also give us some thoughts on, uh, planning structure, economic development structure and ideas going forward, uh, to keep this type of energy and creativity alive. So hopefully, uh, you guys could give us some feedback, uh, to our structure in town now that, uh, from your experience. So that, you know, five, 10 years from now, we're falling back into the same, uh, trap of lack of creativity and flexibility. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Joe. All right, any other members of the public, um, who would like to just make some comments or provide feedback on the principal presentation? The baker's dozen of projects. Great. Um, okay, well, uh, other questions or comments for Russ and the team before we, uh, finish up on this discussion? Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, one, thinking about, um, things that have been discussed and things that haven't. One, uh, item that I'm curious to know why it isn't, um, in the plan is transportation, um, from downtown to the assets that circle or orbit us, the ones that were identified. We talk about bikes and cars and things, but, you know, having a, a way to get from the downtown on a scheduled basis out to the Wolf's Neck Park or out Wolf's Neck Center or to, uh, Pettingill or to the waterfront or to Winslow or to Bradbury or to, uh, any of the places that we are, desert domain, all these things that are, we view as, uh, assets to the downtown and should be connected, need to be connected in some way. Um, and we could experiment, I think, pretty easily with that this summer, um, in a very modest way without a lot of expense. And the other thing is transportation along whatever the route is downtown that makes sense. You know, through pedicabs or through golf cart or something that would help with people who have a hard time walking, carrying packages, whatever it is. Or from Harasika down to, uh, the, the, below to the, uh, intersection at, at Desert Road. You know, th- those are ideas that I don't know if they make sense or they don't, but at, at least I'd like to hear why they don't if they don't. Other things is the idea of the, of the, the greenway makes all of the, uh, connection to nature is a big part of, of the value system. And I heard it in an earlier presentation, I, I think it was, um, I can't remember who made it, but that we are, we are through the tip. I remember who made it, but that we are, we are through the tip with beans and with the work at Gorman Park and with the work on the, on the, on the brook, creating a greenway through the center of town. It is already going to be open to pedestrian and bikes and other ways of moving through nature without really leaving the commercial element of the town. And I know that's something people are working on, but I think it would be great if it were identified in the plan as an opportunity if it should be. I don't know if it should be or it shouldn't. That makes sense to me. I like Joyce's idea about a gazebo in the, in the use of that park. I don't like the idea that, that Main Street got so cut short in a way. I mean, it seems to me Main Street goes from Harrah's Seeket at least Mallett to the Route 22. But we sort of focused really on the core and really on traffic in that core. Given the parklets, etc., but it's mostly about amending the intersections to slow traffic in a very short stretch. Is there a reason we didn't go out further to think about our downtown? I know you presented it in the initial graphic as a larger space, but when you look at what the action plan is, it's really focused on that narrow stretch from, say, Holbrook Street to, you know, up to DeRozers really. And that's a really, that's, that's a, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just wondering why it wasn't longer. And I guess my last question is, I know this is a summer plan, but it's, it's going to inform the action plan. I mean, the vision plan. And the vision plan's got to deal with the winter. And, you know, I don't know how to, how to incorporate the winter in a summer action plan or what projects might inform that planning, but those are the months that, that the economy in the downtown really need to address. January through February, we, I don't know that we can put any more people in our downtown in the summer months. But maybe we can, maybe this will work, but what are we doing that will inform the vision planning? When it's cold, when the murals are under ice and snow, when, you know, the parklets are, are either are too cold or, or too contained. I don't know the answers to any of these things, but I just was curious about the plan in those respects. I don't need an answer now. I just was, I was asked, do I have any more comments by the chair? I, I did.
Oh, I think, I think the those are all question marks for us too, which need further discussion and dialogue and, you know, everything from you know, kind of jitney or trolley or petty gab, you know, I think we have seen, last time we did that, we pop, we did a pop-up trolley line in Memphis. So there's opportunities to do it. I think, I think that's, I think what we wanted to do with this early action plan is to provide kind of a framework for how to think about these things. And then I'm hoping that others will connect the dots between things that we didn't necessarily illustrate in this, but say, hey, we could grab these handful of tactics and do it here with this sort of area. And I think that's the kind of, you know, kind of spirit of this. I hope, I hope people are recognizing that there are and a couple of the commenters earlier, which I should thank them for saying, keep your eyes open. There's other opportunities around downtown that we may have maybe have intentionally or unintentionally missed here. So I think that's important. And I think, so I think we're definitely going to talk about transportation a lot more going into the next phase of the work because, you know, I think you know, there are communities that have those kinds of jitney services that are successful and there's lots that have tried it and had it not work, you know, so I think there's a lot of lessons to learn there. You know, the greenway connections, you know, kind of that overlay of all the various things is happening at a, at a kind of urban design level in this next phase. So I think there's more discussions we should have about that. And then I think, you know, you have a really long Main Street, you know, so I think, you know, some of these tactics could apply all the way out to the Harrah's Seeket or, or, you know, down to West Street or even further. And so I think as you get further into those edges of Main Street, the conditions are slightly different. So it might be that there's, you know, there's maybe less focus on parklets and maybe more other elements of safety and comfort with the street. Or there might be other elements about, you know, cycling infrastructure or, or, you know, we had, we had a comment during one of the discussions recently about connections to to the parks. So I just think that, you know, downtowns are complex and ideally there's a framework here that we can start to expand to those other contexts that are like, as you walk, you know, as you're kind of leaving that block that DeRozers is on and going towards the Harrah's Seeket, the context changes. Main Street's character changes a little bit. And I, and I think that's important for people to recognize those subtle shifts and start to think about it creatively because there might be different things that need to happen in those parts of downtown. So it's not that we, that's not that we excluded those. I think it was just that, you know, there was only so much time to really say, how do we put a a kind of demonstration. So a good set of demonstrations that, that provide you all with examples for how this approach could work. And ideally you, you all can run, run with it, I think. And then the winter part, you brought up winter. I hope you guys talk about winter a lot this summer because that is an issue.
So just one more second, John, if I could. The, what I'm hearing you say is, well, here's 13 ideas. We hope people will pick up on them and run with them because you're not going to do it. The town's going to have to do it with volunteers and energy and all the enthusiasm we've heard. But on the other hand, if somebody has another idea, let's just use transportation. If I wanted to have a transportation committee to try out transportation, nothing wrong with that either. I mean, that, that'd be a positive thing for, or Joyce to try out to get a small gazebo going in Memorial Park this summer. Any of these ideas that people have and they can get going with their own energy are, are good to try. I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, I mean, I was honest about, about Joyce having had that gazebo done by now. I mean, there's a framework that a lot of other towns, especially of your size have used. It's called a, a quick build program. Where there's a real simple way you can kind of do these. And I think there's the idea that, that you should create a framework for people to be creative and be able to engage and bring together volunteers and other community members to do some of this stuff. And I think that, you know, I think that's an important aspect of this, this method. And knowing that we've all just gone through this very odd, very troubling experience together and that now there's an opportunity to really roll up our sleeves and and help, help, help build something, you know, help strengthen the community. So I think we want to really kind of capitalize on that community building opportunity here with this.
That's right, Russ. And I believe one of the reasons that we spent the time that we did in showing you all the feedback that we got is because we want to create that shared vision of what people want. That way, the creativeness, the, what other projects are out there, if we all have that sort of shared vision of what we want it to be, then wow, let creativity roll. But now we have a shared vision.
Counsel Riley?
So there are a couple of things that have taken place recently over the last couple of years. And I want to compliment Earl Gibson and his crew on snow removal during the winter time, which actually opens up our sidewalks, which makes it easier for people to come back into town. Where in years past, they were abandoned and snow was every place. So that's one positive move that we made on our own. Now with this rental of the Bartol Library building to Maine Organic Farmers, you're now shifting the direction into a their group will provide educational pieces in the winter time, which is ideal for the gardening people. So we're going to be attracting. So we're seeing some transition on a natural basis going through with this. And now all we're doing is just doing more simple things to expand and make this happen at minimal costs. So one of the things that I suggested was for us to have a farmer's market in our vacant parking lot at Town Hall on Fridays. And that can even go through the winter time too. And then the, the model of Christmas markets, which in Europe takes place and goes through from October through to the end of January is another thing that we could look at, at the opportunity, just as we're doing right now with makers coming into town. So I mean, there are plenty of ways for us to expand without any cost to anybody. And a great opportunity to draw people into our community. And then you're, we're going to end up filling up the storefronts. And we're going to have artisans. We're going to have, we're going to begin to feature people who make things in Maine rather than outlets. So we're getting a transition. Is it rapid enough? Who knows? But we're in process.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think that, you know, having music and food events combined is a great schedule for winter activities as well because people want to get outside to do something, but not necessarily in a, in a heated tent. They want to be in a building somewhere, but having food and music events. And so we have the onset of Meeting House Arts is one of those locations. We have Cadenza and we have potentially other locations as well for those kinds of things.
I don't think we need to have the glue vine, no.
Any other comments for Russ and Logan?
Thank you.
Fabulous presentation. We still have a budget discussion that I want to leave some time for, so not trying to cut anybody off here, but I just want to get, get things rolling along.
I just want to announce while we still have everybody here that we will be hosting office hours. It'll be, at minimum, it'll be Mary, John and myself. And that'll be held on June 10th from three to four. And Caroline will put a public notification out about that. But that'll give some of you time. If you, if you feel like you want to spread the word and you can attend tomorrow, that's great. But if you need a little bit more time, then that'll give you a second opportunity to give your feedback and talk about trolleys and gazebos.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. I, I think all that information's up on the website too. So, so make sure you check that out. So thank you, counsel. I know that, that was a lot. I really appreciate everyone's input here onwards. So good luck with your budget discussion. We'll, we'll see you soon.
Great. Thanks very much, Russ. Thanks, Logan. Thanks, Mary. All right. Our last discussion item this evening is our final budget workshop before we actually vote on a budget next meeting on June 15th for the budget to take effect two weeks after that on July 1. Jessica, do you have, or Peter, do you have some table setting here to do for the conversation?
Yeah, I know we've got kind of some outstanding items for discussion. I'd like to jump in. I think Jessica's had some conversations. I've had some conversations, had some conversations with her about her conversation. She's had conversations with me about my conversations. I mean, we've got a couple of proposals, um, I think based on some legislative developments that have happened. I know one Counselor Bradley, possible other counselors have been updated. And John, I know, Tony, you have on kind of what we're suggesting here based on the what we're seeing likely to come out of the state budget proposal and also kind of our year-to-date performance. So I'd like Jessica to kind of present, there's at least two revenue changes that we're recommending right now that are significant and would kind of change the budget forecast for the, you know, the budget impact. I know other counselors have either things that they want to ask questions about or suggestions that they want to make. So I won't try to jump on any of those, but I, but Jessica, do you have a, do you have the ability to screen share what we talked about earlier or no?
Or just point out what, what page in the document, if it's easier that way. We all have the items that came in our package. Jessica, sorry to talk over you.
No, not at all. That's perfectly fine. I don't have the ability to screen share because I have to use my laptop to be able to have video and voice and my work is on my desktop. So I don't have the two of those linked. Um, but as far as the items to look at, if you go, sorry. If you go to
Those are going to be in the revenue line items, the revenue unit in the very back of your line item budget.
Yep, it's on page 41. I don't know if you can see, but it's this, it's the Munis report that looks similar to this style and it's labeled as page 41. So the items, no, sorry. The items we were looking at, proposing changes to, the first one is the REV 3110, which you will find in the first two columns of this report. And it's labeled state revenue. This is our revenue sharing line item that we had currently proposed. The manager currently proposed at $650,000 in, in the budget. And we would be proposing an additional $75,000 into that revenue line. So it would be $725,000 that we would be budgeting for state revenue sharing. And this is based off of the biennial state budget projections before the legislature that are currently being proposed at I believe is 4.25% versus the current 3.75%.
And Jessica, these are negative numbers because they're against expenses which are listed as positive numbers?
Correct.
A bigger negative number is a better thing in, in the revenue lines.
Yes.
So, yeah, and this is specifically the governor's proposal. Right now there's two proposals. Jessica, I think it's 4.5 and, and 5.0% just, just FYI, the so the governor's, you know, the, this is the point where the governor's budget proposal and the legislative all the legislative authorized acts have to get reconciled. And the legislature is recommending a full return to 5% revenue sharing, which our state rep is one of several former municipal officials leading the charge on that through the taxation committee and on the floor. So we should be very thankful for that, that we've got that representation. The they've recommended 5%. The governor's recommending 4.5%. That's up from the, you know, over the years, we've been at 2% to 3%. So it's likely that worst case scenario, I think we're going to see 4.5%, but there is a slim chance that that could go back down to three 3.75 that was originally proposed right now.
What, what's the denominator of that equation? It's 4.5% of what? Our sales tax, our gross budget? What, what's?
Yeah, receipts. And it's a whole list of receipts and I don't have them off the top of my head, but it's receipts that are, that are you know, gathered in Freeport is a good sales, sales tax rooms and meals tax, things like that.
Okay.
It's our, it's our share of all those, all those taxes Peter was just referencing based on our population and being a service community.
Thank you.
And the second item that we are proposing a change to is in excise tax, which you will find just above that previous REV 3110. This is actually going to be REV 2502. Again, labeled excise tax. We are currently budgeting for 1.85 million. And in talking with Peter, just based on where we've been the last two years, he's comfortable adjusting that number upwards by 100,000. So instead of 1.85, we'd be going to 1.95. So in total, it would be an additional $175,000 to revenue, which would bring your new levy increase to $99,199. Which would give you a projected mill rate impact of .0494 cents. Or a 1.87% levy increase.
What's a mill rate again?
The, the new proposed one would be .0494.
So a five cent mill rate increase on the municipal portion essentially.
Correct. And if you look, if you want something to compare that to the first page of the transmittal letter that was previously provided, we'll give you the figures that we were at before these changes. Which shows the projected mill rate impact at that time being the .1367 or 5.16%. So we've, with that $175,000 additional, we've gone from a rounded 14 cent mill rate impact down to a five cent mill rate impact.
Fabulous. That's great news.
Should make our taxpayers happy.
Thank your legislature if it happens.
Right.
And I, I say legislature plural, the whole thing, because if they're going to all vote to support this, every single one of them deserves credit for getting revenue back where it should be.
What's the rough timeframe on when we might know this information to be more certain than it is today?
After, after you have to vote, we'll know if it's going wrong, but we won't know if it's gone right. After after you have to vote, we'll know if it's going wrong, but we won't know if it's gone right until after you've adopted your budget. So we may come, you know, if there's negative sign before that something's going wrong and that it's not going to be adopted at four point five. We will certainly bring it up at your next meeting in two weeks, but they I think they adopt it the earliest, maybe on the sixteenth, the day. Um, after, yeah, and it could be later than that.
We adjust the budget in in July?
I'm sorry, Doug.
Can we adjust the budget in July if necessary?
You can adjust it up.
Yes. Which would be the way it would probably go.
We adjusting downwards, I would recommend not adjusting the budget and just cutting spending like we would if there was a, you know, an unforeseen shortfall, so. Meaning, don't, we would just underspend what was approved to match what we're actually going to get in revenue by, you know, if it's cut by a hundred thousand dollars, we'd find a hundred thousand in the budget. Or a hundred, yes, there's a giant moth floating around me here. Or or or. Or adjust the revenue budget a hundred thousand in another direction from somewhere else to make sure we're fine, whether that's, you know, tapping reserves or something like that.
You won't find it in the wages of the town councilors.
Nope, not in your wages, but you know.
Peter, other than just general optimism, can you say a word or two on why you think we're going to collect an extra hundred thousand dollars in excise tax?
Just performance of the past year. You know, we were being, I think, pretty conservative. Have been being pretty conservative all throughout this, you know, pandemic world that we've been in and. Spending. Motor vehicle purchases, but other things like building, you know. Development, things like that, just. I was shocked, I would say, with the amount of, you know, how little impact the pandemic had on. The economy here. And I think all of our, we've been in a very conservative forecasting perspective for the past year. Even the last budget cycle, if you remember, we adjusted a lot of things downward that didn't end up. Uh, panning out just because we were afraid that we were going to be getting hammered.
So I I just would like to pipe in as well, the as far as excise tax revenue goes. You know, Peter and I had discussions last budget cycle. About increasing the level of excise tax revenue based on actuals. And in my conversations with him, it was really. Felt I felt that we should really delay any significant increase at that time to excise tax, not knowing. What was going to happen with the state of the pandemic and how long it was going to last and. How residents would respond if they would be buying new vehicles or not, you know, because it's not a guaranteed source ultimately. It's all dependent on. What your residents choose to do with their vehicles, right? Um, you know, and probably, I don't know, twenty. I'm going to go and say maybe twenty years ago, you could you could. Rely on, you know, an annual increase to your excise revenue. Of, you know, between three and five percent every year without much difficulty. And then, you know, the market tanks and people didn't meet those thresholds, but yet budgeted for them. And then then you're automatically right out of the gate, trying to dig yourself out of a hole. Because you're not going to meet that revenue forecast. So. I definitely, having seen, you know, gone through that or seen that, the impact of that happening. Tend to be a little conservative with some of these revenue projections. Um, but like I said, after discussion with Peter last year, really held off on. Updating the excise projections without knowing what the impact of the pandemic was going to be. And so I, in turn, for this budget cycle. I, again, too, in my early discussions with Peter, felt that. Remaining conservative should really. Be where we go just because with based off of what the state did as far as deferring. Um, the length of time people had to register vehicles and re-reg based on office closures and things like that. A lot of the revenues that we would have experienced last year, we didn't experience until this year. So when I look at our current revenue numbers. That, you know, it's not, it's not always easy to see. Well, you know, what truly should have been last year versus what actually occurred this year, based on that deferral from the state, right?
We started these, we started these numbers, too. I think you should, you should point out two, three months ago.
And that's where I was going.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we we just, when we first compiled these numbers, you know, it's we're at the beginning part of the year. We're only basically January, February is when I'm really starting to. Try to pull these numbers together and get things ready for the budget cycle. And so, you know, at that point. We were looking good for excise, but still not really enough data to. To be comfortable with with another exponential increase to excise tax. Um, but you know, after conversations with some counselors as well as with Peter, you know, looking at where we stand year to date on those numbers. Were feeling fairly confident that, you know, with with two years of. Hitting right around two million dollars for excise revenue that one point nine five probably will not be a stretch for next year to hit. So I don't know if that answers your question, maybe a little more than what you were looking for, but I just. To be given.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, first, I I need to start what I'm going to say by thanking Jessica for all the time that she spent. Educating me about how the budget works and what the difference is between being conservative and being an idiot. But while I held my meetings in District Two, and I told this to Jessica. The undercurrent was the same as I used to hear on the council. When I was a counselor in the eighties, that, you know, we spend money. Council for really good things and, you know, we've done it for bridges and for ifs and things like that, but we've spent a lot of money. And there are people out there saying, I'm on a fixed income and I can't afford to keep up with your spending. So. With an eye towards that message, go look at what. The budget proposal was, and basically we had to raise. Two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars to get to a zero increased budget. And I said, that's a that's a reasonable goal. That's not a lot of money. Good news is that it's not a lot of money. Bad news is it doesn't have a huge impact, even if you do it. It's not a try because that's that's a message to the taxpayer that you care. It's a message to other taxing in. Entities that it can be done if you do it hard and you look hard. So I tried to figure out if there was a way to do it. Jessica and Peter have come up with some revenue adjustments that I think are wonderful. I think it's still pretty conservative. Given what you, your four point five would give you more than. Seventy five. Thousand K. If you really think you're going to get four point five, you could easily do a hundred. And I only say that because of bringing it closer. To two seventy four, not that it makes a whole lot of difference. To anybody, but it's you're you're being conservative for a reason I don't understand, but I'm not upset by it because you gave a lot back. So thank you for that. Looking with the, not the same thing with the assessments. I think you did a great job there. I I don't have any questions. Question starts with some of the other smaller things, and I raise them because if you can pick up a little bit of revenue, you can get to zero. Okay, on the two seventy four. Police, we're proposing in the budget at twenty five, but we know just from tonight's discussion, you're going to get more. Assuming that MAFKA goes forward. So I would ask that you take that extra and adjust the budget by the twenty five or. Or thirty thousand dollars more that's that's in revenue because of that MAFKA lease. If I'm wrong about that, then ignore what I said, but I think based on what I understand, the do I ask the question about what the revenue is from the lease? Um, even for the nine months, you're going to get more than twenty five. Am I wrong?
Yeah, well, yeah. Is that an echo? It started a crazy amount of feedback over here. It sounded, uh. Yeah, I mean, we're only guaranteed with with where we're going right now with the proposal that's on the table. We're only guaranteed twenty six, we're only guaranteed seven months, so maybe maybe twenty eight or thirty, somewhere around there. Um, there's seven, seven months.
Whatever the extra money is, put it back in the budget to get us to zero or closer to zero. On the two seventy four. That's my request. The question that I have, and this isn't for the budget this year, but it is certainly something that stunned me when I looked at the budget. On a portfolio of ten to twenty to fifteen million dollars, our interest income was this year was fifteen thousand dollars. Look, I'm not an investment banker. I don't know what we're doing with that, but that's an expoundingly small amount of return on that amount of money. I know that there are different categories of it and it's it's overnight and sweeps and all of that can be explained, but what I'm suggesting is. When this budget is over, we set up a small committee to review our investment policy. Because the one banker I told that short story to hit his head with his hand and said, you guys are being way, way too conservative. And maybe we're not, but at least I think it's a fair question to ask why we're only getting a fifteen thousand dollar return on that amount of money. I don't need an answer now because I'm not looking for something here. The other points that I want to raise are that. In the. Early going, we looked at fund fund balances and we made a decision. As I recall, and I confirmed, I think today with Jess, that. We have about a, 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 over a million dollars in fund balance that we could use to wipe out this. This tax that we're going to impose on the taxpayer this year. Instead, we chose to use six hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, okay, that's a conservative judgment made by our very conservative. Management team that keeps us from having wide swings every year, and I get all that and I appreciate it. When you took a took a look at a couple of the. Unbalances for a couple of the departments, and I had questions about whether we couldn't. Without being unreasonable or irrational, take a little bit more out of those accounts and drop the balance to zero from the seventy four. One of them was Public Works budget. As I understand it, the reserve account. Has in it a million fifty nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. The five year. Proposed capital budget for that account is only eight hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. The median in that account over the years has been eight forty four and at the highest level, it's eight sixty three. To me, that says we have almost two hundred thousand dollars in that account. That we are very conservatively keeping for a variety of different reasons. All I'm suggesting is to get to zero, take some more out of that account. And apply it to the amount we owe. So the taxpayer gets from the town council this year, the zero increase in his taxes or her taxes. The other account, which is more complicated for me because later on I want to talk about spending more money in it, but on the other hand. A cable account is is really a. An anomaly in this whole thing, and Jess explained to me a little bit about why the revenue doesn't come from, it comes from a contract source. But when you look at it, we have three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars in the reserve account. The five year projection for expenses from that is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And you're adding to it something like. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So you have two hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand dollars in reserve. Your contract is adding, I think, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so again, it seems to me to be one of the accounts in order to reach zero, you could take without breaking the bank or without being. Irrationally unconservative or whatever the the way you might think management. I know Jess is going to tell me I'm wrong in some way. But it's roughly right. You have a lot more money in there than you need for projected capital accounts. You are going to add to it at the end of this year. Jess is going to now say, we already put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into the general fund from that.
Let Jessica speak for herself, Counsel Bradley. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for the advice. I'm I'm telling with Justin, I have had about six hours of conversation, so I'm kidding her right now. I'm not. Not criticizing her in any way. I started this by saying how much I appreciate and respect the work she's doing and Peter's doing. And I think as a town council who ran for office, I can kid with anybody I want. Thank you. So, but I think in that account, there is some money that we could use to drop that budget to zero. And I'd like to see us do it because it is a signal that we care about the people in this town who don't have the resources to stay here. And that's that's the end of my presentation. The end of the day, someday I'm going to make a motion that we drop our two seventy four to zero for these reasons.
You you go, you you tell them, you tell them all the reasons that you disagree. I'll tell them some of the reasons I agree with them and then one then I'll have my one reason that one thing that I disagree with what I just said. Go ahead.
Um, I I will certainly let you you take that. Plan of attack. The only comment I was going to make, Ed, was that. It is the hundred and fifty thousand that you were referring to is actually what we already transferred to the general funds. Out of cable, out of the cable franchise fee contract. What remains in the capital reserve that you were referring to is only about ten thousand dollars. So that's, I didn't want you to think that a hundred and fifty thousand went into capital reserves and a hundred and fifty went into general fund. It's a hundred and fifty, we only bring in about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand a year in cable franchise fees. And a hundred and fifty of it goes into the general fund already. Ten to fifteen will stay in the capital reserve.
Wasn't I correct to say that you currently have three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars in your reserve account? And you only have a hundred and seventeen, and doesn't that leave two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars?
It does. Yeah. No, it does. And you were correct in that you just after that you had said. Annually, we're putting a hundred and fifty thousand back into this reserve, and I just wanted to clarify that it. That hundred and fifty is not going into the capital reserve. It's going to the general fund and only ten remains in the capital reserve. But other than that.
I lost the voice.
Sorry, I was just saying what after that, exactly what you said is what we had talked about, so.
Thank you.
And I'll let Peter take it from here.
Oh, man. Um, yeah, and we can. I think we can say four or five thousand extra in in rental revenue. If you if that's if we're if we're to that level and that's what you want to put in there, then. I would recommend that if you want to make that motion, I'd say staff's a hundred percent comfortable with that for the rental revenue that that we're guaranteed.
I thought it was, I thought it was more than that, Peter. When you presented the MAFKA presentation tonight, it seemed to me that it was up into the fifties. That we were going to get for the the period of time that was before they could make their decision. And after that. There was, I mean, did I misunderstand?
Yeah, it's about fifty two thousand per year it works out for is what we're what we're talking about right now, but it's not, but it's only six. Six months of that essentially that's guaranteed next year.
Why? Is, don't they have a nine month contract?
They've got until got until January, so it's six, it's about six and a half, seven months essentially. So it's thirty, it's it's a twenty six plus, call it, call it thirty, it's thirty, not twenty five. You can call it, you can call it thirty.
Well, I'll take the five, I'll take the five, but.
I know you will. That's why I'm telling you that, yeah, that.
Not as important as I thought it was.
Yeah. It's not as big, but it's something. So I don't, that's not wrong. Um, the in terms of the investment policy, it is conservative. But you got to keep in mind, it was written by the council ten years ago in the aftermath of two thousand and eight where they lost. Probably a big chunk of what the town had in reserves. So. I don't want to lose, I'm not saying not to revisit it and revise it. You should. It's it's conservative. It's overly conservative, but just we got to keep in mind. That there's a reason why they did that, which is a lot of municipalities when, you know, someone belly up because they were over invested. You know, in volatile sectors, others did okay, others were somewhere in the middle. I think Freeport was somewhere in the middle at the time, you know, it took a little bit of a bath. Um, but that's that's council prerogative. So go ahead and, you know, that's that's for you guys to decide how. How much exposure we have. We will advise, you know, I think we could go a little bit. Less conservative on it. Wouldn't want to see, throw caution to the wind. And the only comment that I've got in terms of using any of the reserves. You're not wrong that some of them have more in it than than they need. I think the cable one is in a bit of a drawdown scenario like Jessica. Uh, mentioned, we're spending more out of it every year than we're putting into it, but we're doing it slowly with the intent that it will last, you know, ten or. Maybe longer, twenty years, you know, however long the cable is irrelevant, is a relevant revenue source and a relevant technology that generates money here in town, which is eventually will stop. Um, you know, as things become. Wireless internet provided more than than by hardwired cable. Uh, but just the whole idea of revenues in general, not just specifically the cable account or the or the public works account is that they're one time. You know, they're one time revenue sources that aren't there next year and we start in a hole next year for the budget. So, you know, if we spend easily, you can take a hundred thousand dollars, take your or a combination. So, you know, if we spend easily, you can take a hundred thousand dollars, take your or or combination, one or multiple rep reserve funds, take a hundred thousand dollars and have a zero budget. We could absolutely do that. But next year, we start without that money as a as a source. So we're a hundred thousand dollars behind. So you add that one, you know, if we're trying to get rid of one and a half percent levy increase right now that we're down to. Next year, you automatically start at a base level of one and a half percent because that revenue source is gone and you've got to make it up with taxes.
That isn't a revenue source. That's a capital account. That's a reserve account, something that's sitting there that you're not using. It's in your bank. It's not something that you're relying on revenue that you're going to have to make up unless you have more capital projects that you're not identifying in this budget.
No, that's not what I'm saying, but it's we don't have that. So it's it's booked against our expenses as a revenue in the budget to flatten things out. So we don't have to, if we raise a hundred thousand dollars, if we transfer a hundred thousand dollars of reserve, we raise a hundred thousand dollars less in taxes to pay for the operating budget. If everything stays flat next year, let's say we we start with a zero percent budget next year. Unlikely if inflation's two percent, three percent, one percent, whatever it is. But let's just say we do a miracle and we can, you know, get a good deal on gasoline and heating fuel and healthcare and we come in with a zero percent budget. If we do nothing, we have a zero percent budget, we're already at a one point five percent levy increase because we don't have that chunk of reserve money to spend. So Band-Aid now, Band-Aid later. It's it's essentially, it's what we did last year, Ed, to try to keep the budget flat. So you're not wrong. You're saying the same exact thing that I said last year. The question is, are we in a crisis where we need it? That's for you guys to decide.
Okay. And I and all I'm saying is from my point of view, listening to the people that I represent, it would be a good thing to do for them is justice is a good thing to do what we're doing for the arts, just what we're good thing we're doing for the rich people. Just, you know, all of those things we spend money on are good for one component. This is really good for the people who who really don't have any income. And it is also, I think, a message to people like the schools, you know, who don't seem to have any problem increasing the budget on Freeport. And giving us the 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 answer that, you know, they know what's right. Well, you can make a budget work better for people if you really work at it. And I'm hoping this council will agree that we should work to bring this symbolically down to zero. We've already done a great job. If we don't do it, I I'm going to vote for the budget. I'm not, it's it's not, I'm not an idiot about this, but I think it'd be a good thing to do.
Well, I do have to say, you you've earned the right to 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 make these suggestions because you've put the time in and you've sat there and gone through everything. So I do appreciate that, Ed. So it's not, nothing you're saying is wrong. It's all policy. So it's up to you guys at this point. Yeah.
And if it hadn't been for your willingness to, you know, yours and Jessica's to to open the budget up to somebody who really didn't understand it. And to point out the places where things I was saying was was really wrong. And but also to say, you know.
And to, yeah.
Not all wrong.
No, 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 one, just one or two times. Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Daniele.
Councilor Bradley's point. We're taking a hundred and seventy-five thousand and putting it back in. So we're down to about a hundred. How much more have? We already said we're going to put in after that. What what can you just tell me again what the MOFC we're going to put in? That's five thousand or is it twenty-five thousand? Five thousand, okay.
No, I thought it was thirty thousand, right? But you're talking.
Currently, currently in the budget, there's already twenty-five thousand. So if we if we want to increase it, you're only guaranteed an additional five based on the current contracting.
So now we're down to ninety-five thousand.
Correct.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood where we were. Thank you.
You are right on. That's where at ninety-five. So we can, so I guess the question would be if Ed wants to hit zero, if I should say not Ed, if a majority of the council wants to hit zero, you've got to find ninety-five thousand dollars worth of sources and in the revenue line, um, if you don't want to make cuts.
So to give you an idea, to go from the ninety-nine thousand one forty-four down to ninety-four thousand one forty-four, you're still at point zero four six nine cents to the mill rate. So you're you're still at five cents rounded impact to the mill rate. So it it takes, it takes quite a bit at this stage to to get to a level where it's going to be a a significant mill rate impacts. But just, it can be done. I'm just letting you know.
Councilor Pilch.
I've got two questions. I think they're both short. I think they're both on page forty-three. First question is rev nine nine zero zero is used FB. I assume that's the fund balance. And if I'm reading it right, in two thousand and twenty-one, we budgeted six hundred thousand dollars of the fund balance to use to offset. Or, you know, to to increase, to use our front balance, we budgeted six hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. But we're projecting that we're not going to actually need that. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that six hundred thousand dollars stays available. Uh, and we can use some of that this year as we're proposing. So then the second question I have is, just to confirm, when I look at the total expense, comparing our budget from two thousand and twenty-one to our proposal for two thousand and twenty-two, we're expecting to increase spending by half million dollars. Give or take, right? That that's our impact to what we're spending this year compared to last year.
Correct.
And then all the talk about revenue and no rate is just a question of how do we deal with that five hundred thousand dollar increase? And at some point, it's kind of shuffling, you know, peas and shells.
Do your, right, how much do your revenues, does your increase in expenditure outstrip your increase in revenue? If our revenue went up by five hundred thousand dollars, you'd be at zero. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. That is my question. Thank you.
And the only, the only thing I would add to the use fund balances, that's think of that as, uh, I I don't get to gamble, you know, in this job, but that's me, that's my gamble. And Jessica's gamble on how much we're going to beat the budget by this year. So.
It's a balancing tool.
Yeah, thi- think about it this way. We're 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 hedging that we're going to be six hundred thousand dollars under in terms of expenditure or six hundred thousand and over in revenue or some combination of the two. Um, if she aren't, then we need to draw on fund balance to balance the budget. If we are, then that ends up as a zero for this for this next year. And that helps us not have to raise taxes, six hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes and then just transfer it in next year. It's kind of letting us balance the budget by six hundred thousand dollars in this current fiscal year by beating our budget. So that's our bet on performance right there.
Which which is exactly what you did this past fiscal year. You told us that you were gonna, you were going to draw six hundred and you didn't need it because you were able to balance without having to use the fund balance transfer.
We don't need it yet. There's still a month. I'm hoping we didn't screw up. But yes, that's that's a that's that's a good judgment, John. That's pretty much where we're at.
Other questions? All right. So our, we're not voting on this this evening. We're going to vote on it next meeting on the fifteenth. Um, but we're, uh, am I wrong, Peter?
No, you're you're right. I just wanted to add one thing before we, I I think you might want to, you might want to make motions to make the two changes and any other ones that want to be proposed. I know it's, it might be chomping to make a motion too. But, um, if everyone's in agreement to take out the hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty, hundred and seventy-five plus five, I think is a safe um, motion, or I should say increase revenues by one hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand and five thousand are safe, safe moves. Hundred percent safe moves, in my opinion. The, um, the one thing that I wanted to point out is that five cents on the mill rate for the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home, which is around median, probably a little more than that next year, but you know, um, low median is fifteen dollars in taxes on in next year. So that's what we're looking at to to, that's what our responsibility in raising taxes. I'm I'm taking, you know, fifteen dollars out of the pocket of somebody owns a three hundred thousand dollar home to pay for town operations.
No matter what adjustment we make, it's still going to be.
Nope. If you get to zero, then we're taking zero dollars out of someone's pocket. But but, you know, and you can multiply.
Fifteen dollars annually.
Right. If you own a six hundred thousand dollar home, then you're taking thirty dollars from somebody to pay for this budget additional from what you took last year.
I'm the first to say it's symbolic. And I'm going to move that we bring the, uh, budget, amend the budget so that we have a flat zero increase um, in the amount that we are intending to, uh, pay. And that by using the variety, let let Peter and Karen and Jessica uh, figure out which of the mechanisms that have been identified or others they can find to to bring us to that because we're so close. So my motion is to do that.
Councilor Daniele. Councilor Bradley, I'm all for that, but I don't know if I want to make an amendment to do it. I'd rather have more conversation. Let's see, you know, hey, can we massage this? Can we massage that rather than full-on instructing and and putting ourselves in that place.
I was just thought we got to do it tonight or else, uh, we're in trouble. I I'd be happy to keep this conversation going for another week. Doesn't, but I heard Peter and Jessica say they want to hear from us how they want us to present the budget on the twenty-first.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't mean you can't, you can't make a motion on the twenty-first. Where the the order on the agenda for the twenty, for for the fifteenth, the order on the agenda for the fifteenth, you definitely can't do it on the twenty-first. Um, the order on the agenda for the fifteenth will read, um, where whatever we're at right now, which there hasn't been an amendment to take out the hundred and eighty or to add the hundred and eighty into revenue. But if you make that tonight, or if you make two hundred and seventy-five, whatever the the balance is to get us to zero, um, that's what the order will read in the budget next year, next week. Um, you can amend that motion, but we just going to have to be careful. It's going to take an extra two or three minutes when you make that amendment for us to go back and make sure that all of our lines for your appropriations are said correctly. So we don't end up with like, you know, misappropriating two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars short or two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more because then the taxpayers will kill us.
And so what I think Peter is suggesting is if you make the motion to adopt the or to implement the changes that have been presented tonight as far as the one hundred thousand dollar change to excise tax, the seventy-five thousand dollar change to state revenue sharing and the five thousand dollar change to the Bartol lease. Um, that brings you down to the ninety-four, uh, one forty-four, if I remember correctly. Um, and then at that point, you you, in my opinion, I think it's a conversation of council of what you guys want to see. You know, this is, this is where Peter and I have gotten to 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 get where we're comfortable bringing you at at this, at this point. If council wants to see additional change or a true reduction to zero, I I'm at the point where I feel like the suggestion or the questions need to come from council. Um, can we do this? Or can you, you know, is there room here to get an idea of where you want to go with it? Because I'm off the off the cuff, Ed, I'll I'll be honest, you and I've had this discussion. I'm not comfortable proposing a reduction to the reserve to cover uh, operating, increase operating revenue because it's a, it's a Band-Aid for this year that we have to fix next year. So for me, that I wouldn't be comfortable saying, okay, counselors, this is my recommendation to you because I I'm I'm just not comfortable with that. However, if council says we want you to do that, that's a different story. And ultimately, I'll do it. So I I think I get a long.
We don't really have a choice if they say to do it because they're.
The budget that we're comfortable. And now it's councils telling us or suggesting to us where they want additional measures, if any taken.
Okay, I that I'll change my motion to make this work better, I guess. I I'll move that we accept the recommendations that have been made to reduce the to increase the revenue to by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is the three, two things you proposed and the little bit from the Bartol. And I I would assume I'll get a second and everybody will vote for that. And that'll leave ninety-four thousand dollars for a second motion, which we can resolve tonight, probably one way or the other.
I'd second that motion to to the hundred eighty thousand dollars in revenue.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to adopt the budget projections, including a revenue increase of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from three items that have been identified, revenue sharing, uh, excise tax and a slight increase in municipal facility lease income. Which, uh, add a hundred and eighty thousand to, uh, the amount available, which reduces our levy of on the taxpayer to, what was the? I just closed mine.
Ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four thousand one forty-four.
Yeah.
And five cents to the mill rate or one point seven seven percent.
Yeah. All right. So that's been moved and seconded. We'll take a vote on that. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Riley?
Oh.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay, I I would like to make a second motion that, um, we reduce the, uh, the amount that we raise, uh, in taxes to zero by eliminating the ninety-four thousand dollars that's left after the last vote. And then I propose that we get that money in. That that staff find that money in a less conservative assessment of what will be revenue shared than you have proposed. Because four point five will produce more than the seventy-five than you made a compromise there. Um, I believe that you take some of the money from the, uh, municipal reserve account um, and apply it to this. And I'm not telling you how much, but to get night to ninety-four through that and from some of the cable money that's available. And if you figure out what the, it doesn't matter to the motion, which ways you do that, but that you get there by using those three mechanisms.
Counselor Daniele.
Is there a piece of equipment that we could postpone for six months, ten months buying that we would then know? Hey, revenues were up a hundred thousand dollars, so we can afford it. Or something like that, where we just say, yeah, okay, we're going to take this street sweeper out of the budget. It was ninety-five thousand. It comes, it's May of next year. Hey, look, we've got ninety-five extra thousand dollars. Let's buy it. Can we do that?
So, um, my conversation earlier with, uh, Counselor Bradley was that the reason the Public Works Reserve is at the level it's at is because we had more items within the five-year plan over the last couple of years than what you currently see before you. Um, our Public Works Director made a very concerted effort to be cognizant of the residents of Freeport and the situation that a lot of people are in with this pandemic and really honed his request down and pushed items out uh, to the best of his ability, um, so that there would not be a a large impact for a few years. To the capital plan and to the residents. So we were funding it at a at a higher level in anticipation of upcoming expenditures that we've, that that he has pushed off. Um, already. So and I think that's what you were asking, if it could be done. And it's kind of a long way of me saying, we we have looked at that and we did do that, which is why that balance looks to be higher, uh, than what the five-year current plan is.
I use that as a complete example of a play, just because I could think of what a street sweeper was, but I'm not suggesting that it act like, I mean, I'm suggesting it potentially get moved back a year, but that we, if there were funds available, is it possible to then put it back in the budget? If that makes sense.
So what, I I'm, I think what I'm hearing is something a little bit different than what you just said, Jessica, not about the the actual past performance. But I I think what Counselor Daniele is asking is if we over, if we, you know, in I won't say over over budgeted for revenue, but in in Jessica, in my my opinion, uh, went over where we're saying is conservative by ninety-five thousand, let's just say a hundred, let's use a hundred thousand for round figure discussion. We, you over budgeted revenue beyond what we're recommending by a hundred thousand, and then it didn't materialize. It didn't pan out. Then is there something that we could adjust the spending on midstream next year that we would not spend the money on? Is that not what you're saying?
I think the reverse of that.
The opposite of that. So I'm saying, we take out, and I'm just going to keep using it as a street sweeper. We take out a street sweeper and we say we're going to spend that money next year. Because when in, when in this fiscal year are we going to buy the street sweeper, right? We were going to buy it in December anyway, or we were going to buy it in April. So we don't actually need that money until then. And so we look at the performance and we say, you know what? Look, we've got an extra hundred thousand. So we can in fact buy that. What I'm basically doing is the opposite of what Counselor Bradley is saying that we throw the money in now and hope that budgets are up next year. I'm saying, why don't we take something out? And if things are looking good, we put it back in. So if we get an extra hundred thousand, we can buy.
Take something out of the budget line, that means you don't have to collect the money for that, which means that the money. which means that the money won't be there, because you didn't collect it in the first place.
But if our revenue overperforms, like what Jake's saying, if the revenue overperforms, there will be additional revenue there, the council does have the ability to um you know, issue at any point in the year, the purpose of a supplemental appropriation in your, in your charter procedures is if there's additional revenue that comes available in the middle of the year, yes, you can absolutely do that maneuver, you know, that, that tactic, that is something that would be legal, it would be okay financially. Stop looking at me like that, Finance Director, I know what you're thinking, you're gonna, I'm, I'm gonna close my door, because there's gonna be knives that are gonna get start thrown. It's a clean line of sight right here, between the two offices, so, um, it is something that you can do, it's risky. It might be really risky, or it might not be that risky, I guess I can't give you a good estimate tonight, without knowing what we're, um, what are we betting on for, for revenue that's gonna come in higher than what we're thinking, what are the thoughts?
I'm not betting on anything, I'm betting on the fact that we don't need a street sweeper until the winter's over anyway, and whether we buy it in fiscal year twenty-two, or the beginning of fiscal year twenty-three, does that matter?
I, I know you're using street sweeper. I, sorry, I know you're using street sweeper as the example, so I'm going to.
I'm resisting the urge to start screaming about how broken the street sweeper is, and I know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that example back.
Probably, that are probably gonna, my phone's not buzzing yet, but I'm surprised, but.
I'm gonna use that example back and tell you, your very first agenda in July will have the approval of the award of the bid for the street sweeper. Because of the amount of time that it takes to get these items ordered in in-house and, and available for use is, is how a lot of them work, and that will hold true whether it be the street sweeper, the cruiser, any of the items, a lot of them come to you at the beginning of the year, we may not physically obtain them until a little later, because they have to go through their specs and their, you know, decals and everything else that they all get done to mark them as town property, but the majority of our capital items come to you in the months of July to September.
Meaning there's a six-month, three-month, six-month, nine-month lead time on a, yeah, okay, I think we all get it, sorry, I'll shut up.
Alright, so, I'll just say, remind, we have a motion that has not yet been seconded from Councilor Bradley to instruct the manager and the finance director to uh elicit another ninety-five thousand in, in revenue projections, not cutting expenses, but elicit another ninety-five thousand in revenue expense, in revenue projections to create a zero percent increase in the levy.
I'll second that.
We ready to vote? All right, Councilor Bradley.
Didn't hear you.
Didn't hear you, Ed.
Yes. Still no?
Councilor Pilch?
No.
Councilor Riley?
No.
Councilor Daniele?
No.
Council Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Whitney?
No.
And the chair votes no.
As, as a cheap person who likes to be right, I I'm disappointed that I didn't win both sides of that vote.
Does it mean you owe me a nickel?
No.
I, I uh applaud um the efforts of the manager and the finance director to get us to a uh one point seven percent increase. And I, I, I have seen this process enough times to know that I am far from uh a place where I can second guess Jessica's projections and anticipations. Um, and I think the example of the uh transfer from fund balance uh is an example of what we routinely see from conservative projections, and then outperforming those in actual uh budget management throughout the year. In that, uh, in twenty-twenty-one, the current fiscal year that we're in, we projected six hundred thousand dollars to be transferred to balance, and we've actually outperformed that. Um, so I'm, I am, um, I'm, I'm pleased to support the, the numbers that we have here, and I'm, I'm excited that we've been able to reduce it by another hundred and eighty thousand dollars in found revenue.
If, if we've got any other motions or suggestions, but, not, not tonight, but, or unless you can make whatever you want, I guess, I shouldn't say that, but if, before next um meeting, there may, if you've got other suggestions, anybody, or any other motions, just, uh, if you could float them to Jessica and I, so we can prepare maybe like alternatives to you know, if you, if we wanna make changes, just let us know ahead of time, and we can kind of prepare some alternatives, I know that.
Couple of, couple of scenarios, sure.
Judging, judging on the conversation, I can tell that there's still interest in, in reducing things further, so.
Yeah, Councilor Riley.
Uh, I think Council, Daniele had somebody say, my motion is uh relevant, but uh maybe should let Jake speak first.
I'm trying to say, eh, I'm gonna pass, thank you.
Anything else to discuss, Chair?
I'm just waiting to see if any other hands go up, uh, thanks Peter for offering that. Uh, one more shot at a couple of different scenarios, so if you have something uh that you'd like the Finance Director and the Manager to run down before we get to our final presentation on the fifteenth. They're giving us another week to provide that information, or provide that request, so that they have a chance to funnel that information back through the process.
Well, I mean, in full disclosure, I've got one that I'm thinking of in my head, that I've gotta go talk to Jessica about, before I float it in front of him, blow up the entire budget, so. Um, based on some discussions we've had tonight, so, we may, we, we may not be done from the staff side either.
Right. All right, that was the final item on our agenda for discussion this evening, Council Riley.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we'll take a vote, Council Bradley. And Council Pilch.
Yes.
Council Riley.
Yes.
Council Daniele.
Yes.
Council Lawrence.
Yes.
Council Whitney.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation, Jessica, thanks for hanging in there till the bitter end, we always seem to have you at the very end of the agenda, so.
No worries, thank you.
Not ever complain about that, I appreciate that.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.